Yeah, Aloha, Kakahia, Kakako. Welcome everyone. To the Office of Hawaiian Affairs Meeting of the Board of Trustees that the record reflected. Today is Thursday, April 17th, 2025. Time now is 10:06 a.m. And Board Secretary, please take a roll call.
Trustee Ahuna.
Ayo.
Trustee Akaka. Trustee Akina.
Ayo.
Mahalo, trustee Akaka, I got you. Trustee Alapa. Trustee Galuteria.
Ayo.
Trustee Lindsay. Trustee Souza.
Ayo.
Trustee Wahe'ee is on his way, Chair Kaheli.
Present.
We have eight trustees present. We have Quorum.
Okay, this meeting can be viewed via livestream on OHA's website at www.oha.org/livestream. For those joining us on Zoom to testify or listen, please note that we are using the webinar platform rather than the standard Zoom meeting format. As an attendee, if you are able to watch and listen to the proceedings and would wish to testify on a specific agenda item, please follow these steps. Please raise your hand to indicate that you would like to speak. Well, we will change your status from attendee to panelist when it is your turn. This may take a few seconds, so we appreciate your patience. As a panelist, you have the option to turn on your camera and unmute yourself to provide testimony. And once you have finished testifying, please mute yourself again, and you'll be returned to attendee status. Joining us today, in addition to our Board of Trustees, is our Board Counsel, Richard Naevi Eha Urdeman. Thank you for joining us. Also, in attendance are many of our hardworking trustee aides and our secretaries and our staff, as well as our Board Secretary. We also would like to introduce our Kapo Hana, Stacy Ferrera, and for her to get a chance to introduce any of our executive team members that are here with us today.
Mahalo. Good morning, trustees, Chair, Vice Chair. Joining us today in person and online, we have Chief Operating Officer Keha Pu'u, Chief Financial Officer Ramona Hank, Endowment Director Ryan Lee, Interim Corporation Counsel Everett Ota, Interim Senior Legal Counsel Nichi Ozawa, Senior Director of Strategy and Implementation Alan O'Farden, Senior Director of Hawaiian Cultural Affairs Haile Mofarden, Director of Advocacy Lena Alale, Interim Director of Land Assets Lori Walker, Director of Communications Bill Brennan, IT Systems Engineer and Administrator Arlene Agnaldo, Solutions Delivery Technician Kelsey Wade, Procurement Manager Chris Stanley, and Procurement Agent Allison Ronnie.
Seven, Board of Trustees. Okay, should I repeat that or?
No one has signed up to speak on this item.
Okay, great. Can we make a motion?
I still move to approve the minutes.
Chair, I second.
Okay, we have a motion by our trustee Emerita Lindsay, as far as, as a second from our trustee Akina. Any discussion, trustees? I'd not also want to mahalo our Board Secretary for putting the hard work and time into these minutes and making sure they are as accurate as possible and reflect the testimony of the trustees and the staff, as well as members of the public. So if we hear no discussion, can we take a roll call?
Trustee Ahuna.
Aye.
Trustee Akaka.
Aye.
Trustee Akina.
Aye.
Trustee Alapa.
Aye.
Trustee Galuteria.
Aye.
Trustee Lindsay.
Aye.
Trustee Souza.
Aye.
Trustee Wahe'ee.
Yes.
Chair Kaheli.
Aye.
You have nine yes votes.
Okay, moving on to new business. We have a pretty, pretty full agenda today. There's a bunch of different things we need to take action on. And we have our various Standing Committee Chairs will lead us on that. But first and foremost, we're going to move to new business item 3A. 3A is to get an update on OHA's Administrator's Performance Evaluation. In addition to that, will be the proposed performance timeline, Board of Trustee participation, any procurement, and related considerations. Lehu, do we have anyone signed up to testify on this agenda item?
No one has signed up to speak on this item.
Okay, first and foremost is the distribution to make sure our trustees have the Kapo Hana's contract for reference, and we can bring up Chris and Allison, probably as well as Everett. And trustees, as we're receiving, for, this is your copy, it's important you have this. If you want to reference page eight of this document. And I'll set the, the, I guess, the tone for the, the new business item. So our Kapo Hana was selected by the Board of Trustees, I guess, back in November of 2023. Yeah, October, November 2023. So part of our Kapo Hana's contract, which expires on October 31st, 2026, is to have an annual performance evaluation. We've talked about performance evaluations here throughout all of OHA, and we continue to work on those this, this quarter in line, in kind of in the spirit of our new performance evaluation system and methodology that we're going to roll out at the end of the year. But as equally important is our Kapo Hana to receive that performance appraisal. The performance appraisal should have been, or at least initiated, in November of 2024. It was by our, by our previous Board Chair. There was a changeover in that in December, and it's taken a little while for myself in this new role to be able to meet the terms of the contract. So if you reference on page eight of 17, under item five, is a performance appraisal. Performance appraisal of the CEO's level of success and discharge and her duties and responsibilities will be conducted at least annually. So starting in at least November, December of 2024, our previous Chair began the process of doing that. It is April now, and this performance evaluation is still not done. I'm working on it, and this opportunity is for me to update you, as well as for procurement, to update the board on how we are in compliance with Kapo Hana's contract. The item B is an important part of this contract. It says that all appraisals will be conducted by the board in consultation with a professional consultant who will be selected in accordance with HRS Section 103D. Previously, the performance evaluation of previous administrators, CEOs, had been done by an external consultant. Historically, that performance evaluation has costed the Office of Hawaiian Affairs about $30,000 to do that performance evaluation. In the Chair's opinion, that is a lot of money for us to spend on a performance evaluation. And so I have decided in executing this contract that I intend to follow the intent of the contract, but also to do it in a fiscally prudent way and to take on more of the responsibility to do that performance evaluation, along with all of your help and support. And so if you read item B, in consultation with a professional consultant, reached out to the procurement department who had, under the previous Chair's direction, began the procurement solicitation for a vendor to, to, to do the performance evaluation, as had been done in the past. They put that out to bid, and at this time, we'll recognize Chris and Allison to give us a report on what those initial procurement solicitations revealed.
All right. Good morning, Chair, trustees, invited guests, KP. So, all right, so we are in the tail end of our solicitation process. We had a couple of, I don't want to call them false starts, but we did a request for quote, a competitive seal bidding process. We weren't able to get to the price point we wanted, so we elected to do a professional services method using our existing legal categories that have been pre-approved for, by, by us, by OHA. So we, unfortunately, we only had two, two vendors, two firms who are, were pre-approved. And the state rules mandate that if we only have two and we don't have the minimum of three, we need to make a good faith effort to attempt to get a third. And that's what we've been doing these past couple of weeks. So we did that by posting a call for statements of qualification, which is basically the firm's resume, CV, in a, in a good faith attempt to get to three. That posting period was mandated by the state is 10 days. Yes, sir. Sorry. Sorry. Apologies. So we will, we, the 10-day posting period ended yesterday, and we did actually get another firm who entered. So we need, the next steps now are we need to seat a review committee, which is, for legal services categories, is going to be recommended by our Corp Counsel. This review committee will be a committee of three, and they, what they will do is they will determine if this additional one vendor who entered, this additional firm, is acceptable to be entered onto our list. Whether or not this firm is entered as acceptable, we will then proceed to the second committee, which is a selection committee, who will rank the existing two or three, as it may be, if this vendor is accepted. So in that selection committee would be recommended by the Chair, and there are actually no mandated minimum timelines that we need to worry about for this. There's, so you're asking about timelines. If we put our mind to it and we resource these committees appropriately, we should be able to have decisions by as soon as next week on this. The next step after that is Chair would approve the committee's recommendation, and we would proceed to negotiations with the number one ranked vendor.
Up on the Hill, and ask them, how do they evaluate their CEO? And can I, we ensure that vendors that you use are also have been notified of this procurement, so that they can potentially provide an estimate on what they would provide. And I was surprised to find that those trustees do not contract a third-party vendor to do this work. They do it in-house. It's a responsibility of the chairperson, and the trustees work together. They put together a very fair assessment, and it doesn't cost them a single penny. And so I had a heavy hesitation to move forward with a bid that could potentially cost this board $30,000 when it can be appropriate for us to meet the language in the contract, but also give a very fair performance evaluation to our Kapo Hana. So thereby, I went back to Chris and I said, hey, let's re-sculp the work. Let's make it very clear to the vendors that this is what we're looking for, that we'll meet the consultation with a professional consultant language in item B of this contract. And they came back with just about the same estimates. And I was wondering if they read the revised scope. Well, Chris went back to them, and they said, yes, we read the revised scope and same amount. And I'm like, okay, well, we're going to plan C now. So, you know, we are reached out to beyond just typical HR consulting firms, because we have law firms that are on our approved vendor list that can provide some of this professional consultation, which is very broad. You can, you can take that a whole bunch of different ways, and that's what we're waiting for now. The intent is that if we can meet a vendor that we are happy with, it gives us a good price and value for the consultation that I'll need, then we'll move forward with that. And you want to speak to that very briefly, I guess, or even Everett? You can add in where we currently are with the process, and when do you think we'll have an opportunity to, to secure that?
Sure. Yep. As I said, we're in the final stages. We do have the one vendor. We do need to go through the, first, the review committee process again, and then second will be the selection committee. I don't think there, if we put our minds to it, I don't think there's any reason why the selection committee cannot finish their work by next Friday. As I said, there's no mandated state minimums required for this process. And after that, after the vendor is selected, on, the number one vendor is selected on Friday, we would, we would then reach out to them with our scope and ask them, ask for discussions, ask for their, their price, any, any considerations or any issues they may have with our terms. The Chair, as the head of the purchasing agency, will need to be present in those meetings. He will be leading the negotiations with these vendors. If we're unable to come to terms with this number one ranked vendor, we would then move on to the number two vendor. And if we're unable to achieve terms with the number two vendor, we move on to the number three. We only have a max of three vendors currently for this process. So if we're not able to make terms, to come to terms with any of these vendors, there is a provision that does state that if no qualified person responds, the head of the purchasing agency may determine in writing that the need for this service continues, that there's no time for resolicitation, or that resolicitation would likely be futile, provided that when making the determination, consideration shall be given to time constraints and competitive, in competition in the marketplace. So what this basically means is that we then reserve the right to reach out directly to firms or vendors who may not have been on any of these lists to enter into negotiations with them.
Well, I've made the commitment to Kapo Hana that her evaluation will be completed and done by the end of this fiscal year. So Monday, June 30th, that's the commitment I've made. So we have about 60 days. And once we can select a vendor as quick as possible, then based on that consultation, my intent is to work with all of you. Every one of the trustees here, as long, as well as others in evaluating the performance of our Kapo Hana. And to be clear, that performance period would be from November of 2023 to November of 2024, when I was not here on this board. And so that's all of you. And so it's, it's not fair to look at, you know, time when I was here, because that performance review period should be during that period of time when all of you were here. I think based on the timeline, it's also critical to get this done, because come November 2025, it's time for the second review. And that should be given on a timely basis. You should receive that by the first quarter of 2026, because by the time we get to late spring, early summer, when we're a few months before the expiration of the contract, this board will need to decide whether to retain or not retain our CEO administrator. And there is no provisions in this contract to extend. It is a new contract, so that'll be before this board then. And so in order to do that, it is vital that we give good quality feedback to our Kapo Hana, so she can get the performance feedback she deserves, and she can course correct if, if need be. So totally committed to that. And, but I'm going to need your help, because this is the period when you were all here. I'll help facilitate quarterback their evaluation, but it's really your evaluation of her. But because the contract specifies getting a consultation with a professional consultant, we need to meet that, but also do it in the most fiscally prudent way possible. And maybe some best practices from some of other elite trusts that, that do this annually as well.
Chair, I just want to clarify that when I was Chair, I did ask for the start of procurement all the way back in August.
Yeah.
Because I anticipated a, a change of maybe leadership, and I wanted to provide our, our Pohana with an evaluation by November. But I did not get the movement of the procurement department.
Yeah. Okay. Fair enough. Trustees, any other questions, feedback on that? Trustee Akina?
I'm wondering, Chair, what the role of the Budget and Finance Committee is in the CEO evaluation process. I vaguely recall when we established the committee that CEO evaluation was listed as part of the duties of that committee. I, I could be mistaken, so I will appreciate any clarification of that.
I would assume that that would be scoped, scoped in the bylaws. Somebody has their bylaws handy with them. Can look at what the scope is of the BNF Committee, but obviously, all the trustees would be a part of the performance evaluation. And part of what this professional consultant will give is that process, the best practices, how to, how to templates or whatnot, so we can do that very quickly. Yeah. Trustee Akaka?
Mahalo. So the, it was a joint meeting between the BAE Committee, as well as the RM, to do the interviewing process. And that went through October, and then her, Stacy's first official working date was in November. I think it was November 2nd. So, but to what Chair Emerita had mentioned, there was work, I believe, looked into getting the evaluation done last year, and I had also inquired about it, because I do recall having co-chaired that meeting, that that was a part of the conversation, that it was to be done annually.
Sure. Hundred percent. Yeah. Yeah, trustee Wahe'ee.
I think it's BNF in consultation with the BAE Committee. I think that's what it.
Sure. Yeah, Everett. Please.
Thank you, Chair. Good morning, trustees. The trustee Akina's question of the role of the BAE and now the BF Committee is the selection and recruitment of the CEO. It doesn't apply under the bylaws to the, the evaluation.
Okay, great. Thanks. Great question. Anything else, trustees? Okay, so we'll be under a very short timeline, and so I will appreciate your timely responses, which will probably happen, I would imagine, hopefully, late May, early June. Can do. Akina? Yeah. Okay. Mahalo. Thanks, guys. Okay, our next board business is item number 3B on the agenda. Lehu, do we have anyone signed up to speak on this item?
Yes, we have Ryan Souza.
Okay, let's see. I'll read the. Yeah.
Salamai. They're both, we have Ryan Souza and Keola Maoteng.
Okay, so trustees, as our, as our testifiers get situated to speak on this item, this item is a previous sponsorship that both the BNF and the Board of Trustees had previously approved. Hearing concerns from some of our trustees, we've decided to reexamine the OHA sponsorship funding to Kuana Ike for the Hoa Koakoa Lahui Spirit Fest 2025 event. This was scheduled, and I believe was completed on or about the time of March 21st, 2025. The board had previously approved a $15,000 sponsorship. And what we'll discuss today is whether or not we decide to affirm that previous board action, to rescind the board action or amend the board action that was taken on March 6th, 2025. And so at this time, we'll recognize members of our public. Please introduce yourself and mahalo for coming to OHA.
Aloha, everyone. Mahalo for allowing us to, to come before the board once again. My name is Ryan Souza. This is Keola Maotengun, who. Uh, my name is Ryan Souza. This is Keola Maotengan, um, who is a part of our Board of Kuana Ike, and he flew in from Maui. Um, just to kind of answer any questions that anyone might have, we also have, uh, we brought along some things that we can share with the board as well. So I think we should open it up to
Well, I I can, I can uh jump in. Uh, aloha trustee members. Uh, my name is Keola Maotengan, acting as the interim executive director of Kuana Ike. Uh, and so I was the one who had submitted the application and so I just wanted to uh mahalo you for allowing us to speak on behalf of the event. It did happen uh March twenty-first through the twenty-fourth. And I wanted to speak a bit in terms of the intention behind what it is that I submitted. And then also after that, we can field any questions that you might have. Um, so within that, the context of the application, a big part of uh what we're focusing upon with the event Spirit Fest, this is our fourth year. And in the past two years, we've collected a lot in terms of digital content from the speakers that we have invited um to participate, uh Kumua Ramsey Tom, uh Le Opu Rider, a number of different um persons who are in the community actively supporting in terms of uplifting the Lahui. The thing is that we don't have necessarily the capability or capacity to be able to do anything with the last two years, let alone what we were able to record this year. So we have roughly a hundred and twenty hours of stuff. And so when I wrote the uh application, it was really looking at being able to focus upon um the, the equipment, the recording and editing, because a big part of what we are aspiring to do is to create a so, like a whole storehouse of this Ike of this mana'o to be able to support others who are not necessarily here in Hawaii or here on Oahu. Um, on Maui, as Ryan had said, I I run another nonprofit and do a lot in terms of community organizing and advocacy. And I had invited a number of other leadership who are also active in things in the aftermath of the wildfires, except we got hit hard with a cut of a critical program. So no one was really able to come and attend uh Spirit Fest. And so a lot of what, you know, even being here today, we have a farmer's market on Saturday, we have a multiple events at the other nonprofit that I run. So it takes a lot to be away from what it is that we're doing on Aina. And so the idea came, well, what if instead of having to go someplace, it was something that we could disseminate and distribute to the community? For us on Maui, that's incredibly important, yet with the fifty-three percent of, you know, Kanaka living on the continent, that's something that we are also looking at. Because aloha for all of us is such an important piece and consideration, yet one of the programs that I, uh, our organization, again, separate nonprofit, Ka'ehu, um, that we facilitate is around displaced families from Lahaina living in central Maui. And one of the things that I've observed is struggles with identity and connection, especially because there is such a deep-rooted aspect that is tied to Aina. And so with what we're doing with Kuana Ike, the intention behind it was to be able to continue to collect um, you know, the, the stories, the teachings, all of these things that these incredible line of speakers, which Ryan can speak a bit more to have and are contributing to um, you know, the, the event, but then have it be something that far outlives the event, something that we can support and stewarding to get out into our community, out into the Lahui. And something that, you know, we're not like creating courses or anything. This is basically just going out to everyone for free. Except we just didn't have and don't have the capacity. And so that was and still is the intention behind the ask, the application, and what it is that we still um aspire to do. We, we're gonna do it one way or the, the other, but it'd be a lot easier if there's that level of support in terms of being able with uh especially a lot of with, with the editing and whatnot. It's something that with even our initial ask, it helps to start things, but a hundred and twenty hours of stuff is a lot of stuff to process. So I just wanted to clarify that in terms of the intention behind it, being able to um create highly accessible um teachings, wisdom, knowledge to those who may not necessarily be here in Hawaii or here on Oahu. And to get it out to those who are most in need. Mahalo.
My component is um, I'm kind of the, the spiritual aspect to Kuana Ike. Um, a lot of what we are building with Kuana Ike is really um um a mind, a mind that of reading what aloha is on top, right? To remind people in the Lahui, Lahui, outside of the Lahui, really what our purpose is as individual human beings, how to be a good human being by by really becoming aloha, living aloha. What do we do in our daily lives? How do we inspire one another to, to really make changes within our lives? And the only way I can make changes to the community is really to, to live and breathe and become aloha. And so as Kuana Ike moves forward, that is really a huge part of why we we created Kuana Ike, to have people come, be inspired by the speakers that we have come in uh to, to share this inspiration and Ike. Um, and then from there, have our attendees go out, return to their jobs, regardless what, what it is, how they interact with their communities, with their ohana. Um, to really have a deeper understanding of what aloha is, what their purpose is in this life. And this is how I believe we really make the differences with, with uh with Kuana Ike. There, I don't know what really the, the, the questions were which brought us back here today. Um, all I can say is that I am, we are completely guided by the sense of elevating the community, e- elevating individuals to remember who they are, right? To remember who, what we were taught by our, our kupuna. Um, to remember the the mana that we have to go and make a difference in, in the communities. And if this is to inspire the individuals who come to our, our Kuana Ike event to go out in the public and to inspire the public as well, then we are absolutely doing the work for the Lahui as well. And so this is, this is the intention behind everything we do. We do have a lot of content that we need to get through and and splice and, and put together uh formatting, everything, and that takes a lot of money. That takes a lot of uh equipment to be able to do that. And that's really the initial part of why Keola Ma wrote, wrote the um
Application.
The application. The rest of it is up to, up to us in how we utilize, whether we receive the fifteen thousand or not. How do we go about, how do we move forward? We're still being on purpose to share aloha with the world. We are living completely by anti Pilahipaki's um prophecy that, that the world will turn to Hawaii in the twenty-first century, which is right now. Right? To really come back and understand um that it's aloha that's gonna be one of the key factors in, in bringing peace to the world. And Kuana Ike is one little aspect of, of how these changes can be made. But we have to, we have to stand upon the truth of who we are and really be able to um I know without a doubt what my purpose is. On a daily basis to be and to share aloha with everything that I do as a kahu, with everything that I do as an artist. My job is to constantly exude aloha, to make sure that people understand how this, how this truly is. And so again, as we, we said, the fifteen thousand can help us to get a lot further, can, can allow us a huge microphone to, to really inspire the entire world. And if we don't get that, then we're still gonna find a way to do it, right? We're still gonna find ways that, that we need to get uh this message out. So it is about sharing our kupuna's Ike. It is about um about coming back time and time again to, to the truth of aloha. I think all the qualities that Pilahipaki spoke about within the acronym of aloha is, is and will continue to remain strong and stand strong upon um our intention for Kuana Ike. So that is what, what I bring um to the board today, to everyone here that are, are listening. That although it may seem on the surface that we are not directly working within uh Hawaiian community, uh, we are working directly with individuals who are directly working within the Hawaiian communities um that can have a profound effect on the way aloha is distributed. The reminder of what aloha is all about is distributed. So that's the importance of what we bring for Kuana Ike. Um, I would love to hear concerns and, and questions from the board or from anyone else. Um, just so that we can clarify our position. So mahalo for allowing us to speak. Thank you.
Mahalo. Thank you, mahalo. Thank you. Um, you guys can stay there. You can turn off your microphones. We're gonna discuss this as a board. If trustees have questions, they can ask you those questions directly.
Chair, can I give testimony?
Oh, okay. Oh, okay, great. Hey, sorry, Jermaine, I didn't know that. We have one more person? Okay, great. Um, well, Jermaine? You are recognized.
Chair, can you hear me?
Yes, we got you locked here, Jermaine.
Okay, mahalo. Aloha, Chair Kahale, Vice Chair Souza, and honorable trustees. My name is Jermaine Myers. I'm an Oha beneficiary for beneficiary advocacy and empowerment. I'm also a Nanakuli Hawaiian homestead Lassie. Mahalo to Chair Kahale and Vice Chair Souza for bringing this event sponsorship back to the board for reconsideration. I appreciate the opportunity to provide my concerns related to this event sponsorship previously approved by the board during a previous budget and finance committee and B O T meetings that approved the sponsorship of this event to receive fifteen thousand dollars. Trustee, the original budget and finance committee folder packet did not include most of the information we see in today's folder packet. I was only able to obtain this information through a U I P A request. The original budget and finance packet did not disclose the following that's now included in today's packet. The event anticipates a total of one hundred and fifty participants, of which they estimated forty percent to be native Hawaiians. That comes to sixty of the one hundred and fifty participants will be native Hawaiians. The cost charged to participants to attend the event is five hundred dollars per person. This fee does not include any meals, only light drink refreshments. Therefore, the event organizer received five hundred dollars times one hundred and fifty participants for a total of seventy-five thousand dollars for the three-day event, or twenty-five thousand dollars for each day. The event organizer requested Oha to sponsor fifteen thousand dollars to cover the following budget items. Five thousand dollars to pay for rental of audiovisual recording equipment. Ten thousand dollars to pay for editing of the recorded equipment. That means ten thousand dollars for someone to edit the video recordings to create a final video of the event for a combined total of fifteen thousand dollars. They did not, wait, they did advise Oha of an in-kind donation of ten thousand dollars to cover the costs of the event production and recording staff. Meaning someone to use the audiovisual recording equip- equipment to record the event over the three days. The application does not specify how many production recording staff is included in the in-kind donation. The packet also fails to inform Oha what they plan to do with the final edited video recording they produce of the event. Questions come to my mind, are they giving or selling the video to the hundred fifty participants for a fee? Are they giving or selling the video to the general public for a fee? Are they going to use the video to promote future five hundred dollar events? In contrast, I want to share data, views, and arguments on another Oha sponsorship to the Council for Native Hawaiian Advancement, C N H A Hawaiian Convention. In June twenty twenty-three, C N H A Hawaiian Convention in Las Vegas charged three hundred dollars to C N H A members and three hundred fifty dollars to non-members. In November of twenty twenty-three, C N H A Hawaii Convention on Maui charged a hundred dollars to C N H A members and a hundred seventy-five dollars for non-members. The registration fee included full access to all convention activities, thirty dollars in food vouchers, keke hula, hoikee attendance, discounted hotel rates, and a hosted lunch. About two thousand people were expected to participate in the convention. In addition, C N H A offered scholarships to waive or decrease the fee. I hope trustees will consider rescinding the fifteen thousand dollar sponsorship, especially since information was not provided on the budget for the video productions and also if they plan to give or sell the video. If trustees grant them the fifteen thousand dollar sponsorship, then I hope Oha obtains a copy of the video to review and to share with its native Hawaiian beneficiaries. As I shared with Oha trustees, I am a native Hawaiian in Nanakuli Homestead. I shared with Oha about our event where we, uh, our Christmas on the Avenue and our Operation Blue Light uh Christmas, where we gave out free Christmas gifts to our community, our keke in our community. We also provided seating for free for our kupuna. We never received any money from Oha for this event. All of it was volunteered. We also did videos. The video of the event was done by a volunteer for free. I go to a church that we, we actually videotape for the community to watch our videos on virtual, but also the video recordings where we can learn about God's love, but also about aloha.
Thank you, Jermaine. Mahalo.
Yeah, kuapu, God bless all of you.
In order for us to place this on the table so we can begin discussion, since we have no further testifiers, is that correct? Okay. Uh, we, we haven't even put it on the table yet, though. Um, yeah, hold your question, trust, trustee Huno. Um, I'm going to read the action item and ask for a motion. Then we can put it on the table and we can have as much robust discussion as we want and um we can recognize trustee Huno. So the being that there are no other testifiers, the action item is Board of Trustee number twenty-five oh six to reexamine Oha sponsorship funding to Kuana Ike for the Hoa Koakoa Lahui Spirit Fest twenty twenty-five event scheduled for March twenty-first, twenty twenty-five in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars with the intent to affirm, rescind, or amend prior board approval on March sixth, twenty twenty-five. Okay, we have a second? Moved, seconded. Okay, now we have discussion. Um, so for this discussion portion, um only if a trustee has a question of you, then you can engage. You're welcome to sit there and I'm sure trustees will have questions. Um, just so I can frame this uh action item, um I don't think this is something that is done um regularly, where we revisit a prior board action that was done not only in the committee, but also at the board table. And so this, I think this is a, will be a good learning process for all of us. And at the end of the day, I feel like this sponsorship process is going to um improve itself. We sincerely appreciate your time um and your presence here to share your event and to um show us what that intent is for that event. And so we wanna just sincerely mahalo you um for coming. The, the, the discussions that we have and maybe the questions that we have are, are not in any way a reflection of the work that you do, your passion for our Lahui uh and our community. Um, and we just wanna make that, make that clear. Part of what we're working on is to ensure that this process, this internal process we have of um distributing resources to our beneficiaries um is done in the most prudent manner, that we're meeting our obligations uh as beneficiaries, that we care about every single dollar that leaves the Office of Huana Affairs and goes out into our community. Uh, that the resources that we provide uh have the widest reach um for our principal beneficiaries. That is what our mission is. And so in every decision we make, uh, in the evaluations of the sponsorships that come before this board, um, that is the lens that I look through it. And so I cannot underscore enough our ability to provide grants and sponsorships need to have the most direct and impactful um effect for the beneficiaries that we serve at a very, very personal level. Um, uh, and, and the the gravity of those decisions and of bringing this back to the board for its reconsideration is one that we have to make. Uh, because when one event gets resources, another event doesn't. That's the reality of it. And we distribute, Kapu Hana, correct me if I'm wrong, Ramona, about a half a million dollars annually in grants and sponsorships. Um, this new process is a new process that we're still working out the kinks, right? Um, and, and, and the board is, is actively engaged in that. So this process we're going through is something we have to go through. Kuana Ike happens to be the one that, that uh will, will be um one that this board evaluates very, very closely. Um, but that hopefully we use as a good tool for other sponsorships that we have to review uh in the future. And, you know, for our trustees, we've been dealing with a lot of sponsorships over the last three to four months. In some cases, I've heard from other trustees unprecedented, the amount In some cases, I've heard from other trustees unprecedented, the amount of, uh, sponsorships that have been coming. And so there's a lot to review. Uh, we make mistakes sometimes as well. It's nobody's fault. But at the end of the day, before the resources leave the organization, this is the work we have to do. Our beneficiaries expect of us to do it. Um, and we need to do that. And so, um, with that being said, I have questions. Um, and I'll, uh, reserve those until later because I want to give trustees opportunity to, to discuss or ask questions. But one of the things that you will see, um, differently in this Board of Trustees packet that will allow you to better evaluate this particular sponsorship is the actual applications, um, by the, by the applicant. That is not provided to us as a board. When the action item comes to the Budget and Finance Committee. We also are not provided with the scoring sheet of how the scoring individual scored that. Those are two concerns that I have. Um, we do have a matrix of what the, um, dollar amount is that is distributed and how that's, that is determined. I, I am imagining that when the rollout of the sponsorship was presented to us by our chief operating officer back in January, that we were presented the, the, the matrix or the methodology of how a score would be allocated in number, a dollar amount. But I have some concerns about that as well after further review of that. And so what you have in front of you is not just the action item provided by the administration, what you also have is the actual sponsorship application. You also have the scoring sheet. And you also have what the scoring sheet would determine, the dollar value amount would be for discussion today. That is the full picture of what this, um, particular applicant provided. Uh, and so I'll hold my questions and I'll defer to, is tr- uh, trustee Huna's hand is raised, so trustee Huna, you're recognized.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, this is for our, our administration. So did we take a vote on this? I'm pretty sure I voted yes, that's why. Did we? So.
Yes.
So, uh, like, like all the rest of the grants that went out, we, we did the same thing too, right?
Yes, there were two votes, um, trustee one for the B F committee and it was approved then and it was approved at the second vote at the B O T.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I don't know why we even voting again, seriously. Because I, I, I'm gonna tell you right now, we kind of be changing things after we say yes. My, my, my vote does not mean no. I don't even want to vote right, right now. This is a yes all the way. Why am I voting again? Who's, who, who, who do I have to talk to right now? Who, who, who brought this back to the board?
I brought it back to the board, trustee.
So wh- why are we voting again when every other one went through already? The same way. I, I'm not, I'm not trying, I'm just trying to be fair. Everybody voted yes, they vote you be yes. Thank you.
Mahalo trustee Huna, mahalo Chair. First of all, guys, I just want to say you're innocent until proven guilty. Nah, joking. Uh, thank you guys for being here. Appreciate it. Um, sure it's not easy going through our application process. Um, my question would be actually not towards you guys, um, towards administration. It's vetted. It's a process that, that is vetted. Uh, we have a B N F committee that it comes to. Before it gets on the agenda, goes to the B N F committee, right? There's multiple layers, just before it comes to the board. Um, I think we made it clear. I've asked multiple times. I think this board has asked multiple times. We do understand that we, we are lacking, um, help, right, in certain areas here at, at OHA. And we need help. Certain people are stepping in and thank you guys. So she Kehau, uh, taking on that role. Um, my concern is that it comes to the board, um, at that point, it's already vetted. Uh, like Chair mentioned earlier, this is unusual for the board to have to review, right, and even see the application, right? And then at that point, for members of the public to even see the application, right? And so, um, I think my question would be, what did we do wrong at, at that point? Because it, it got passed. But I think the information provided to us at that point is my concern, which we always question. Right? And we've been questioning this for last over a year, I think. I think this has been the most engaged this board has ever been uh, with the grants process. Because we do understand that we do need help here in the grants department. We need a grants director. And so it hasn't been easy on both ends for the applicants as well as, uh, the different departments who stepping in. And so I guess my question would be, this process, um, he went through the process, it got vetted, uh, by administration. It went through, uh, multiple meetings beforehand to the B N F committee, came to the board. Uh, when it comes to the board, we're putting our trust in administration and everyone who's seen it prior to us. Uh, because it's not our responsibility. I'm not the grants director or grants department. So I'm taking into account that it was vetted, the information was provided to the best of their ability. And I have everything before me when I make my informed decision. So my question would be, how did this get to the board table? That, that would be my question. Just a simple question, Kapana. If, if can, thank you.
If, if I may, just, I just want to step back in the process, um, vice chair. Um, so there is a, a very stringent vetting process. And you are correct to assume that there is a lot of due diligence that happens before that A I gets to, to the board. So this particular, um, uh, sponsorship request actually had two reviews. Usually the sponsorships have one. So two reviews were, were done, one by a committee member and then by that committee member's supervisor. Because this is the first sponsorship that has come in front of the board to support us, um, our Manai Maoliola goal regarding spirituality. First one. So this is, this is a little bit of an anomaly. We're used to the, the, the cultural ones. We're used to, you know, things that are a little bit more clear cut. But this is the first one that was based off of spirituality, which is again in, in Manai Maoliola. Um, I, I want the board to feel comfortable and confident that knowing that when an A I is put together, right, it's based off of the application, it's based off of the evaluation. And then it goes through several, uh, reviews. So on an A I, Everett will sign off for a legal review. Ramona will sign off because it needs a financial review. Um, Kehau signs off because she's looking at it from the, uh, grant sponsorship, right? I sign off to make sure that all the due diligence of the three that I just mentioned have been completed. I look through it myself. And then the last signer before it come to this, this board is the B N F Chair. So B F Chair also reviews it to make sure that it is worthy and has met all of the, the due diligence requirements before it comes to the board. So that's all done prior. Once we get the approval from the B F Chair, it then goes on to the agenda and the materials, the A I goes to the board with the respective information. You folks have your requisite time to review those materials. And if questions during your review prior to the board meeting, B F or B O T, certainly the administration is available to answer any questions or concerns from that A I. So you're right, Chair. It does not come with the evaluation. Um, it doesn't come with the application, but certainly we would make those available if there is a question by any of the board members, if there's a question or concern. Um, it did have two readings. Um, they were approved on, on both, um, both accounts. Um, the feedback that we've gotten to why we're back here is that there were questions, um, raised about the ticket price. Um, that the venue, it was held at a hotel, um, that potentially this was more for visitors than our, you know, Kamaaina. And, um, and I, I want to say from the administration side is that we have funded numerous events that are held at hotels. C N H A, Holokubal, I mean, it goes on and on. Um, ticket prices, uh, unlike, you know, I'm similar to Koana Ike. Ticket prices are no different than events that I just mentioned, C N H A, uh, Holokubal. So we're, we're not really sure where the, you know, um, why the level of concern. Um, we felt very comfortable that the lineup of, um, of Kanaka uh, speakers and leaders that presented at, at the, you know, at Spirit Fest um, warranted our support, that, that they were not, um, unknowns. I mean, they're very prominent, uh, Kanaka leaders in our communities and.
Okay, yeah, let me have a follow-up.
Sure.
Again, it's not the, it's, some of it is the event, but I want to go back to trustee Souza's original question, which is the process. So when we receive a sponsorship application, walk the board through that. And, and, and I'm not necessarily looking for the administrative receipt of the application. But when we get to the decision-making, the vetting of applications, the assigning of monetary amounts to these applications, who, not by name, but by position, who is doing that work?
Thank you. So what we, we are currently using are strategy implementation team members, um, to help vet. Because again, uh, a large part of how we determine if we are going to, you know, review, is, is there alignment to what we are trying to accomplish here at the office? And our guiding document is Manai Maoliola. And every resource that we put forward should advance that work.
So the S and I team evaluates these applications?
Based off of where that particular sponsorship may fall in those four strategic directions, then it would be the, that particular team or team member that would review. So in this case, it would be a team member or the director, um, of health outcomes because spirituality falls under that.
Let's go, let's, let's go back to like inception. Application gets submitted, walk the board through the next process.
Okay.
Who is in receipt of it?
Okay, so it comes in through our, um, COO team. And so it's basically COO, um, and, and two admin assistants who assist.
What do they do?
So they basically intake it. They look to make sure that the application is complete. They're looking to make sure that it has, and complete means all of the, the, um, fields are completed as well as the I R S, uh, form, the I R S letter, as well as that they are a five oh one C three and a W nine is provided.
So basically just purely administrative, are the fields filled out?
Correct.
Do they have the necessary compliance documents, I R S determination letter? Okay, next step.
Then it, then it would be assigned based off of how that field is populated with what Manai Maoliola, uh, alignment.
Who makes that determination?
You know, who makes that decision? Oh, come, come. We, could we, could we switch? I'm sorry. Maybe one of you stay and then.
So I did share all this information in my presentation on April second. So as Stacy shared, intake happens. And as I shared on April second, we don't consider an application until we receive the completed application and the required uh, I R S letter of verification that this is a nonprofit, um, certificate of vendor compliance. And then the third is the W nine. So after those are received, yes, our team, they, they do the checks. They will follow up if something's missing. And based on what is identified by the applicant as the alignment to Manai Maoliola, we will assign it that way.
Who is we?
Me and my team, my team.
You are personally assigning?
No, our staff. My staff is assigning. So they'll look based on, again, what the Manai Maoliola alignment that was identified by the applicant is. So if it's health, it's gonna go to the, um, the, the health team. If it is education, it'll go to the education team.
Would you say, uh, when you refer to staff, are you meaning administrative assistants?
Yes.
Or any of them temporary hires?
Yes, one of them is. And I've shared that. I have shared that, you know, we are under resourced. So I am using, I've been very, um, explicit about the fact that yes, my, one of our temps, one of our staff is an administrative assistant and he is the temp.
So they make the decisions on where the application goes next?
Just for evaluation, yes. However, the team has come back and said at times, this one doesn't necessarily fit here. And so we have asked them, okay, well, then if you think it belongs in a different outcome, send it there. And so they have done that. We have asked, and Elena has been very helpful in that process to in going back and looking at it. I will be honest, I don't personally look at every single application. I depend on our staff to do that.
So once it leaves, that makes the recommendation, it then goes to S and I?
Yes.
And one of the S and I team members?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But it is sent to all of them together, so they can see all of the applications and who's assigned to what. And then when they access, if there is, again, if they think that it actually this fits more with others' team, or this might be more appropriate with Pony's team, then they will make those shifts.
Okay, when the evaluation is ongoing or decisions are being made on the application, um, who is conducting that work?
So it goes to evaluation, right, and then it will come back. And so we have, and I think I shared this last time too. So we have tiers. So one of, first of all, we use a scoring rubric, um,
I guess my.
Which I also shared last week.
Doing the scoring rubric?
The evaluators are doing the scoring rubric. So.
Consultants?
Yes, yeah. So they get the rubric, right? So mahalo to R and E. They helped us put a rubric together based on the criteria which I have shared, which is on our website. Um, and so it's a, and I shared this last time too. The, it's a one to five rubric.
You keep saying that, and I appreciate that. But we are reevaluating this. And so we understand that you briefed this board multiple times, but we are doing our work right now. So you don't, please refrain.
I will refrain from saying that comment.
Thank you.
I will.
You can continue.
So again, the rubric, which was created by R and E, that is used by the evaluators to score the application. And the evaluators use the application and all the materials that were provided by the applicant to score. It is for the first six, I can't remember, um, six or eight criteria. It's a one to five scale. And then for budget and I don't have it off the top of my head, the last criteria is a one to ten scale. And so they score, add up their score at the bottom and make their overall recommendation and comments. From there, we take it to a tier, right? So if it's a forty-five or higher, we would recommend a hundred percent of the eligible requested budget. If it is a forty to forty-four score, then we would recommend seventy-five percent of the total eligible budget. If it is thirty-five to thirty-nine, then we would recommend at fifty percent of the total requested eligible budget. And part of the reason for doing that is because, you know, we needed some way to manage the funds that we have and still be able to support, um, uh, events that may or may not hit that mark. But from thirty-four below, it's like a D and a F. And so anything thirty-four or below doesn't make the cut. And so those are the tiers. So they come back and we just rank them based on the scoring. My team and I do that. So we rank, so you know, whatever from highest to lowest. And then, based on what budget is available, we may be able to award all of those that are recommended. We haven't gotten to, and I, and I, call him, I almost was gonna say I said this the last time, but it's something that may, it's, it's gonna come up. So, so far, like, if we have the available budget for what's recommended, write on, then we can go ahead and make those recommendations. When we get to a point where we don't have enough budget for what is recommended in that round, and, uh, we will have to reconvene the team and do some like calibration and discussion to figure out awarding. We haven't had that issue happen yet, but I sus- I anticipate that it will happen during quarter one. Our, our recommendations will exceed our available budget. So that hasn't happened yet. But, um, so we just rank, you know, and if we have the budget, which so far, mahalo Kehaku, we've had the funds. Um, then we'll put the summary together, draft our agenda language, action items.
What qualifies the strategy consultants to make the decisions and determining factors on the application scoring sheet?
Well, because Manai Maoliola is alignment is such a, a big part of the application, right? Uh, so prior. Uh, so prior to this application, it was just alignment to mission, which is very broad for Office of Hawaiian Affairs. So we intentionally identified alignment to Mana'i Mauliola as criteria, so that we can get closer to what we're trying to achieve in our strategic plan. And so why they were initially asked, although I will say we have expanded that, uh, the evaluator group, and there's intent to further expand it, mahalo to the BOT suite. But initially, uh, we asked them because they, you know, the assumption is they know Mana'i Mauliola best.
I mean, I get, it goes back to my original thoughts about, you know, if, if dispensing fiduciary resources is one of our highest functions that we do, who are the most appropriate, um, people that should be making these decisions and recommendations? Um, because the scoring sheet is critical and we're gonna go through the scoring sheet to evaluate how the scores were done. Um, and I have questions on that. But my question to you is, because it is such an important fiduciary responsibility, who should be the most important or the most, um, appropriate individuals making those decisions on the scoring sheet? In your opinion?
Well, again, I think I've shared that, that because of Mana'i Mauliola being such a big part of this application and our desire to align to that, um, and create something that is more rigorous than what we had formerly. Um, we did identify, uh, the SNI staff, but also Hailama, because in addition to our strategic outcomes, there's our strategic foundations, which is culture, Mo'omeheho and Ohana. Um, I have since branched out and have asked our community engagement director to also be an evaluator. And if still the plan, we do plan to onboard, um, other evaluators from BOT staff.
This is just my opinion, um, and my thoughts are that I see value in the strategy consultants doing, um, deeper work into the application than had been originally done when received by the admin assistants. But that decisions on scoring and, and, um, evaluating applications and putting numbers, which it then equate to dollars should be done at the director or the manager level, rather than at the consultant level.
So.
That's again, my opinion.
No, koko'o, so normally they are done at the director level. This specific sponsorship was evaluated by a consultant because the director was not available. And therefore, as Stacy shared, when it came back, I sent it back to the director, his supervisor, to also evaluate. So this one did get a second evaluation. He didn't fill it out. He just reviewed and supported what the consultant, uh, uh, provided. But the, the, the evaluators are the directors. They're the directors, and again, I have since included the community engagement director. But this one specifically was initially scored by the consultant, but we sent it back to his director for second review.
Was that because the score, did the score change? Was that because the consultant, um, had a different score than the director would have scored it? Do you know if that changed?
Uh, no, it didn't change.
So the score that the consultant recommended was the score that the director reaffirmed?
Yes, yeah. So he stood behind the score, he reaffirmed it. And he also shared, you know, which Stacy shared, that they, we don't see a lot of these types of events that are, you know, that are celebrating, uh, educating and trying to spread, you know, spirituality. And so that is also part of, you know, uh, our health outcomes. It's not just physical and mental and emotional health, but it is also spiritual health. And so he did comment that this is rare, which is also the comment you'll see in the application. That, um, but his comment was that, you know, this is a rare kind of event that we don't see, that we rarely see, and so was in support of it.
Okay. I have a follow up question, but I don't want to take up all the time. Trissey Lindsay, did you have a question?
So I just wanna share with our applicants here that I am the Maui trustee and, um, our meetings here are streamlined statewide, so my questions came from our Maui people. And, well, first of all, uh, Pohana, uh, this application is listed under the Mana'i Mauliola educational pathways and not health. So if spiritual comes under health, yeah, it, it's, it's not, it's listed under educational.
Is that under the sponsorship application?
Yes.
Which page is that on?
What page? Nine of 15?
Um, just to clarify, um, Chair Emerita, so that's what the applicant put, but we, after reading it, sent it to the health outcomes.
Okay.
Mahalo.
So, um, the questions, now this, keep in mind that it's island Pe'opaya. Um, the questions they had were, um, the, the cost of $500 for the three days and what Hawaiian can afford something like that? And they were extremely concerned. Uh, the other concern was that it was located in Waikiki, a heavily tourist area. So they were wondering if this was a tourist promotional thing. I, I'm just being upfront with you, and this is the comments that we've gotten back, uh, so highly concerned. So, um, more than one person approached, um, approached us. So, um, we brought it to our chair, and basically that's why you're here today, because our people are upset. Um, they got less money than, than, um, we, we were offering you. And, um, they, they were questioning whether this was a valid, um, you know, request for our funds. And also the use of the $15,000, you list as photo, photo videography. And, um, they wanted to know if, if maybe that videography might be available to the general public. And that, and that the spiritual part of this, you were bringing in six Tibetan people, and that's your, totally your business, but what does it have to do with the Hawaiian culture? So those were the questions, and as you can see, quite a few questions and serious questions. So, uh, it's not normal for us to bring it back before the board, but these people were very animate and, and they came from not only, um, Maui, but from Oahu as well. So, uh, this is why we're presenting it, uh, today. Thank you, Chair. I'd like to know how many Hawaiians attended.
Uh, that is a fair question. I do also wanna, uh, again, reaffirm that the ask was for the content production, not necessarily attendance. However, we had anticipated between the 150 was for all attendees, and that was what we were anticipating from Oha with the 18, from our speakers and their guests, as well as the, uh, volunteer staff too. So in terms of actual, uh, strict participants, we had maybe about 120, 125. And so, um, a big part of that initial number with the 40% was including, uh, Oha's participation, including our speakers, and then the folks coming in from Maui leadership. Um, ultimately, they didn't come, we got hit with the loss of, uh, the Maui Dislocated Workers Program at that same time. And so most of us who are on the ground, um, had to stay there because we lost a substantial amount of our workforce. So even though I was having that conversation, that's where that 40% number came in. And looking at attendance, we had 87% from Hawaii at large. We had about 21% in terms of native Hawaiians. You wanna talk about Waikiki?
Yeah. Um, they're, they're great concerns, you know, definitely concerns that, that, um, are warranted because of the idea of what Waikiki represents to people, right? So in that, in that respect, towards that question. Waikiki is seen to a lot of people as just a tourist hub, right? Where we house our tourists and where from there, they choose what they wanna do, uh, with going out into Hawaii, greater Hawaii and, and learning a part of our culture. This is us bringing the culture into Waikiki too, right? So where, where we are filled with so many tourists who are there, it's not the, the basic tourists that are coming to Hawaii to come to Spirit Fest. These are people who are aligned with finding a deeper part of their own spirituality to come and resonate with what our Hawaiian kupuna taught us here in Hawaii. So we do have many profound speakers who have spoken at many of our events. And these people, whoever, whoever buys a ticket to come here to Hawaii, um, they are hungry for this information because spirit is not just Hawaiian, spirit is not just Tibetan monks. Spirit is everywhere. At the same time, there is no gender, no color to spirit. But if we're gonna look at being good human beings, then the spiritual content of being good human beings comes back to what is this spirit that we all feel around the world, not just in Hawaii? Hawaii is a pico of, of what we know to be our connection with our kupuna, with our amakua, with, with na'a'ua, right? With everything that brings us to who we, we ought to be. Um, this is what we were sharing within Spirit Fest. So you're right in that this is the first, and I even brought it to your attention, where this is the first, according to what was listed on the application, that I think this is the first time that, that we're having to look at a spiritual entity or spiritual group coming in to, to, um, be a part of this. So to, to me, that was very exciting because now we have people from around the world wanting to know what Hawaiian ike is like, right? To learn, how can we move aloha as anti-pilahipaki, uh, put upon us to share this aloha with the world? So, oh, sorry. So that is the intent of, of that part, having it in Waikiki. It was a place that, uh, we had relationship with Hyatt, so they provided us a room that was accommodating. The 500 that we, we charged for, uh, entrance is 500 to cover the basic costs of the hotel rental. That's it. Nothing else. We don't save none of that for ourselves, basically. Whatever we spend on the hotel, all of that goes right back out. So beyond that is people wanting to sponsor us on their own kinda thing. So the 500 just takes care of, of the hotel expenses.
Oh, on, on the specific numbers? Yeah, um, so we also brought sheets of the different attendees. Our, I mean, our max was 150, and so we were anticipating having somewhere near that area. Um, but then in, including, wanted to make sure that we had space saved for certain folks. And as I go, going through this application, is 18 for Oha, if it comes through. We're just gonna keep those open one way or another. We have our speakers and their guests that we wanted to accommodate for. We had our own staff, which is roughly 12 altogether. And I had, um, conversations with 10 different community leaders who I wanted to just have come from Maui, um, to just help and support with what, you know, we're all kinda still going through. And so ultimately, when, ultimately, we had, I think, 122 who were, uh, paid attendees.
Okay, so if I reference number 14 on your application, it, it clearly says, we estimate roughly 40% will be in attendance.
Yes.
Estimating the number of native Hawaiians to attend the event.
Yes, and that was including if we had Oha with our speakers, with our attendees, and then the 10 community, community leaders from Maui.
40%.
Would be 40%.
Okay, so less with all of those individuals that represented a minority of the attendance at this event for the native Hawaiian community?
Yes.
Okay. Let me go back to admin and the scoring sheet. So trustees, if you look at the scoring sheet on this application, out of a total possible of 50 points, the, um, both the strategy consultant and the director scored this at a 45. And a 45, um, would elicit 100%, up to 100% of the eligible budget request. Under item A, event scope number three, the application indicates a proposed number of native Hawaiian attendees, which is achievable and reflects a significant positive impact on the betterment of conditions of native Hawaiians. And this was scored with a four, meaning the native Hawaiian attendees would be in high attendance. The proposed number of native Hawaiian attendees is substantial, indicating a significant potential for positive community impact. But by the testifier's acknowledgement, there was 40% estimated to be a native, to be in attendance, and that would have included all of Oha, staff, and everyone else. And in reality, there was less than 20% native Hawaiian attendance?
Uh, 21%.
Would you say that the proposed number of native Hawaiians that attended were in high attendance?
Native Hawaiian attendees?
High attendance?
Uh, yeah. High attendance?
High attendance. Of everyone there?
Yeah.
The totality of that, were there a majority of native Hawaiians that would constitute a high attendance rate? I mean, when your application says 40%.
Right.
So it can't be a yes?
No.
No.
Okay, so if it is not a yes, then my question to admin is why was that scored a four?
So Chair, I, I'd also want, okay, so I, I didn't score that, but I want to add, um, to the consideration that it wasn't just attendance, but the ask is for the video production piece, which is going to provide wide-scale dissemination of what occurred at the event. So it's attendance in person, but it's also the availability, the access of those speakers and what was shared at that event is going to be made available for free wide scale. So Kanaka, non-Kanaka, you, there, I mean, I, you, you folks need to quantify for the board that dissemination. So where is it going to be?
But I don't think that's where this category is. I think that it specifically says, and I'm reading it, the proposed number of native Hawaiian attendees is substantial, period.
Yeah, I understand.
So it was not substantial. And I, I'm just saying, when we're looking at the scoring sheet, I don't think this would have warranted a four. I, I, I could settle on a three, moderate attendance. I don't know if, I mean, so, someone could argue a two with low attendance for the attendance.
Okay, so you, you're doing a retrospective analysis now, right? So we are doing an analysis based off of what is provided to us at a point in time. So if we were to do exactly what you're doing now with every sponsorship chair, I think we would have very different results for every single one.
The applicant's application said 40% was the estimated native Hawaiian participation.
Correct.
I don't think 40% means high attendance when looking at the matrix. They said 40%. That is in high attendance to me. And what I'm getting at is if that was scored a three, then it wouldn't have received $15,000 because it would have been below the threshold. That would have been a 75% maximum allocation.
But Chair, but that's only with the information that's being provided us today.
No, no.
When they were vetting it, it was based on a consultant's recommendation, which scored in the area of 40. Now, what we know today provides us with information, if they had it before, they'd probably score it differently. Uh, I see, and let me, let me continue on. I see two tracks going right now. And by the way, thank you very much, rarely does it ever come to this type of discussion. So you guys in the crosshairs, but such is life, right? And I, I also find it interesting that there's two tracks going on. One is objection to process, which is something we're gonna fix with this conversation. The second objection is to substance. Then nobody has exclusivity on aloha. I don't care whether, where you're from. If you got it, you got it. Tibetan monks got it too, I suppose. That's why they were invited. But I, I find it troubling that aloha would be on the table here for us to approve and not approve. It's almost, it blows my mind that it would even get this far because what I assume is that the information that you folks were garnering will make it to the, for the greater good. We don't even know where that's gonna be. And I would assume and hope that the information that you folks provide gets into policy. And I don't even know how that's gonna work, but it should get to decision makers as well as the general public. I'm, I'm just trying to figure out, we're gonna come up with the process. We're, we're cleaning up the process right now, obviously, and you guys are, the guys caught in the churn. But, uh, moving forward. But uh moving forward, I think that it's important for us to realize that there's a reason why aloha is on the table here. Cause we gotta exhibit aloha too in how we do our business as well. So how do we bring this conversation to a an end or at least to a conclusion that will provide us with answers going forward? Do we, do we do it here on this table at this particular time, specific recalculations or recalibrations?
I mean, it's possible, but I just wanna make one, one, I believe, correction is the forty percent number.
Yeah.
We just didn't get that today. It's in the application. The consultant reviewed that. The forty percent attendance. So the event was going to be a minority of native Hawaiians in attendance.
Yes.
Question to them was, why was it scored with this particular number? Because that one number makes a big difference in the amount that we would have provided.
Yes, and and my my response to that would be, the number was not available when they made the decision.
Yeah, no, I I know exactly what Chair is saying. So um, yes, Chair, if if we just went by that description, right? And say we gave it a three, but I'd also like to, for the consideration of the comments that the evaluator made at the bottom that talks about the level of access that the video production of this event was going to provide to a much greater audience than just those in attendance. So I think it's it's the two of those things, it's the comments plus what was going to be in attendance is, I believe, and again, I'm, I don't have the person here. Um, but having that comment of greater access as well as in attendance warranted that four. And 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 the the monies were not to pay for attendance, um registrant, registrants. It was for the video production aspect.
Sure.
Yeah.
Let me address that. And um, we could go to page two, and that's the budget. So if the trustees in the board packet um see the sponsorship requests. The sponsorship opportunities, the maximum amount was ten thousand dollars. That would have provided eighteen tickets, logos, and a bunch of different things. But this sponsorship request was for fifteen thousand dollars. It exceeded the sponsorship, um, the advertised sponsorship amount. And so when I look at the scoring sheet, under the budget, it was awarded an eight. That the budget request is appropriate for the proposed event. That the line item budget is detailed and justified the requested funds. One, it was, it exceeded the amount that was provided to others by five thousand dollars. Um, and so my question is, why was it scored an eight? Cause it could have been scored a seven, and it would have been a forty-four. I actually think it should be more of a three or four in the minimally appropriate range. But nevertheless, was there any flag that this was a book five thousand dollars above what that amount was?
So, yes, and so I um refraining from repayment. Anyways, I shared, I have shared that um I did consult with Everett before we rolled out Ho'a Kua Kua because because we have set the max budget at fifteen thousand. Even though there is a sponsorship level for five, ten, fifteen, if they are providing us a breakdown of the budget, their budget, what they're gonna use that for. Which personally, I think I'd rather see that because when we do sponsorships, basically, we're buying a table and getting all these perks. But anyways, it, and we, and you know what? We can fix that. We can fix that and say, hey, if you're just sponsoring, boom. You your max sponsorship is what you can request and and you don't have to give us a breakdown of the budget. But anyways, because they provide a breakdown of the budget and because Ho'a Kua Kua's max is fifteen K, the sponsorship level max doesn't prevent them from asking for the fifteen K if, again, they're providing the breakdown of their budget, what that fifteen K or whatever it is that they're requesting is being used for.
So I just wanna read what seven and eight says on the scoring matrix. The amount requested is appropriate for the proposed event. And the line item budget is detailed and justifies the requested funds. And if I look at number twenty on the application sheet, renting of AV recording equipment, five grand, editing of that recorded equipment, I don't know what editing of recorded equipment means. That's ten thousand dollars. Do you consider that a detailed budget? That justifies the requested funds?
At this time, at the time that that this application was there, yes. I mean, they gave us, they gave us a breakdown. Can we have a better detailed budget? Yes. And so I gotta stop saying my reference, but I I've shared that this is an area of improvement. We want to beef up the budget request form tied to this uh application. And we have some good examples of that from other applicants who have given us a whole uh Excel spreadsheet where they're sharing what's being requested from us and what, you know, the, again, the in-kind, what they are, they are putting in. But at the time that this application came through, this is, this is how we've asked for the budget breakdown.
And Chair, may may I also add that if that is the requirement, that that level of detail that I think that you're you're trying to to get us to is that um many of the sponsorships that come across this table are for table sales, right? For fundraisers. And so we will be asking for that level of detail for breakdown. What the cost of a table includes, food costs, decorations, I mean, is that? Uh, we just wanna make sure that, again, the level of detail that we're, that we will be asking for it would be would be applicable to all who come through our sponsorship. So um although this one is high level, um it could be broken down by number of editing hours, cost per hour, things like that. But if that's the level of detail that we wanna apply, that we would apply that for all sponsorships.
I guess it's it's been applied here because this particular event eh the requested amount exceeded the sponsorship package that was made available. It was um acknowledged that up to forty percent of native Hawaiian, our beneficiaries would be participating. So sixty percent not native Hawaiian. Of the forty percent, that would have included OHA's participation and other native Hawaiian participants. So it was a minority event that native Hawaiians participated in. It was for the recording of this event for video production purposes, right? Not the actual pain of speakers or rental of hotels or the physical nature of the event. Could this event have happened without the video recording? This is a question for either of you. Could this, could you have put on Kua ike, and you did put it on? Could you have put it on without the video recording, without the fifteen thousand dollar sponsorship? Was this a absolute need or was this a want?
Uh, personally, I feel it was a need. Uh, it was something that in the past two years, we've been able to bootstrap recordings together, and we haven't been able to do anything with it. We don't have the capacity. And so the ask was specifically to be able to continue with gathering more information, gathering these stories, gathering these teachings, be able to process it and just flood the world with it. So we don't, we would not, we still don't have that capacity at present.
And and just like we had said earlier, reiterating, trustee Galiteria, our chair, this is nothing against your event. This is OHA, our administration and our board figuring out how we do this in the most prudent fiduciary way possible. And so it's more along an internal process piece in terms of how, I don't, this event is worthy of of our funding and our participation. My question was, how did we get to this number we got to? And it's obvious that, and this is just my personal opinion, I think it was scored inappropriately. Not by uh anyone's um bad faith. I just think it could have been scored more appropriately and um uh it could have been vetted in a better way. But we also passed this as well. So I take full responsibility for that in the process. It's just a difficult conversation for us to have, but I think there is a lot to learn from it. And and we'll revisit what is the appropriate action to move forward based on this conversation. But that's where I'm coming from. Trustee Suzan.
Hey, Mahalo, Chair. I I just wanna apologize because that first question I asked, I didn't wanna spark such a robust conversation. I think I could have got my answer in two minutes, but I appreciate all of you. Um, I'm gonna just, first thing, I I got two questions, Chair. The first one is more of a request, more so a demand in a timely manner. I don't wanna go back and forth with our COO about our grants. I don't. Right? I don't wanna go back and forth with Kapo Hana about our grants. I don't want you guys sitting here in front of me, right, putting you guys on the spot, making you feel uncomfortable, right? Right? With uncertainties if you can get your money or not, right? So that being said, I think we need to put emphasis, emphasize the fact that we need a grants director. Yeah. Kay, I was taking on the responsibility, right? And Kay, we cannot reiterate enough, right? How much you said and you told us. This board recognizes that. Okay, but we cannot help because this is the situation that we created. We agendized this. It's an unusual unusual situation for all of us. It's an awkward situation for some of us. Yeah, but this is the question the Board of Trustees gotta ask. Yeah. Um, there's multiple layers, like I said earlier. Right? It goes to administration, we have a BNF committee also, who is comprised of trustees, right? And we just stated earlier, then it comes to the board, board approved it. There was an opportunity for board members to ask questions that day as well. And if it was to see the application, show it to me, or I'm not gonna vote. I have that right, yeah? So my question was not to put you guys on the spot, was not to put you on the spot, Kayao, or Stacy. Cause we do truly appreciate every single thing you're doing, okay? And that's not why we asked. And I just wanna make that very, very clear. That's not why I asked my question, Chair. Um, secondly, how was OHA represented? And this is not question to, gotcha question like Brickwood says, it's not a gotcha question. How was OHA represented? Because our name is behind this as well. And and I think overall, that's our number one concern is this board. If it does align with our strategic plan, our process was better, okay, we approved it. Now, I think our our concern is also like the give back, not monetary give back, not a table at the event. How does this serve OHA at the end of the day? Whether marketing materials, with our banner, with our, I mean, we have something.
This is one of them, one of the banners that we had.
Okay.
Uh, also on on other pamphlets on our resource, um it's like a bookmarker, but went out to all of the attendees. We had OHA prominently uh placed on there. Um, I think at the time of of saying, of everyone saying yes at the first time that we had met each other, we were so excited about it, you know, of course, we were like, okay, blast it here, you know, get get OHA and everything. Uh, making sure that it was prominent. We we talked about you guys at every single event, thanking OHA for their support of our event. Um, so, yeah. I mean, we were so excited to have OHA sponsor our event.
We're we're a bunch of doers, so as soon as we got the green light, we went.
Yeah.
And so we had it online, social media, um, we had it on our webpage. Uh, we had it, you know, presented from the stage, so OHA was a big part of it. It was well represented at the event before and even after.
Yeah, um, Chair, but I I I'm the trustee who was waiting, but I just wanna close in saying, was again, mahalo to administration. My question was more so how did it get to the table? Cause I wanted to understand the process again, not so much in detail because it did stay multiple times, Kayao, in the past. And um, but um, I I I do understand the intent behind your organization, what you guys do. Um, I read up the website and materials that was provided. Um, that's how I made my decision, honestly, right? Um, at the end of the day, I I I think, like, going back to what Brickwood said earlier, we're gonna figure this out. And we gotta come together and figure this out, right? And I'm not blaming anybody. For sure, I'm not blaming anybody because we should be taking full responsibility. Cause it ends here with the trustees at this board table if an action item comes before us, yeah? So this board takes full responsibility for that, and we're gonna work on the process, right? We're gonna work on the process. Yeah.
I think because all of this is is more of a post-event discussion. Um, you know, what was listed, what was itemized on on the application can be further itemized, you know? Uh, so it's up to you folks, if you guys want us to break it down even more to to make sure that we are being transparent as well with with the monies that we receive. Um, which we have yet to receive, right? So we're trying to be as as uh forward-thinking with what we would have received and how we would have spent it. Now we can.
It would be helpful for the board also to have a dissemination plan.
And I I'm sorry, sorry, trustee, Oona, trustee Lindsay, one more thing. Uh, we gotta keep in mind the action item, yeah? Affirm, right? All was already made, the motion and approved, uh, or it's in, right? Either yes or no, or amend, right? There's also an opportunity for that, just remember the board. Mahalo.
Thank you, Chair. I couldn't hear you, but I I I know you were speaking.
Sorry, trustee. Yeah, sorry.
I can't buy your body language. But anyway, no, me too. It's it, for me, it's about how how do we move forward? You know, it's like, I I I I've been seeing this so long. We don't need just one grants director. We need, we need our us trustees to write policy to make sure everything is 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 running well. And 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 the reason why I say this, this is not the first time this happened, where we go back, we take away grants. We gotta figure out what we doing too and how we follow our policies. And the reason why I saying this is because I don't know how to move forward. But if we do move forward, I would like to question the other six grants that that we gave grants that day too. There's one more o- other group that I wanna question. So I mean, do we wanna do that or do we wanna just move on? I mean, it the, for me, this is, this is, all of this is the work of us, of the the trustees. And and the reason why is because we expect good decisions, we we expect good information coming to the board table. And what 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 makes me sad is is there's a lot of time grants, grantees been offered grants. And then when it comes time to getting it, all of a sudden, we 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 taking it away because somebody doesn't like it. And that gotta change. And and that really gotta change. Because when we say yes, it's because we got good information. And I'm saying, I'm hoping that we're getting good information from all of our people. But for me, it's it's about, it's about, we get one, we get in group right here in front of us, you know what I mean? It's not like, I know we're not questioning them, but I wanna question the other six too. The other six grants that that were were given on that day too. I wanna do it the same thing too. Is that, is that okay? Because I wanna know if our actions is okay today. Because right now, we need to fix our grants. We need more than one grant director. We need, all of us need to understand how it works. And when we say yes, that means yes, means yes. It doesn't mean yes, but ma- maybe no, maybe no next week. Yeah, yes is yes. So I wanna know how to move forward because if we're gonna move forward and we're not gonna give these guys any money, I wanna question some of the others. Thank you.
Trustee Lindsay?
Um, first of all, I'd like to thank Kiola and Kumu for for handling this with us. And Chair, I think I think we should put this to sleep. And um, you know, it's not our applicant's um fault that our process is not very clear to some of us as well as maybe them. So I'd like for us to, I'd I'd like to make a motion that we um affirm our grant to them. And um fix this this problem within our um agency and not subject our beneficiaries to it. And let this be a lesson to us, um, where we're lacking and that where we can be, where we can improve ourselves. So this is my motion.
Trustee Waikiki, I made a motion, and the motion says to basically affirm, rescind, or amend. It's kind of a vague uh. Um, so I made a motion to reexamine OHA's sponsorship funding to Kuaa ike for the Ho'a Kua Kua Lahu Spirit Fest twenty twenty-five event scheduled for March twenty-first, twenty twenty-five in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars with the intent to affirm, rescind, or amend prior board approval. Uh, that's taken on March sixth, twenty twenty-five.
So do I need to amend? I can amend it.
Okay, uh, trustee, okay, that's that's good.
Yeah. Yeah. I'd, I'd like, oh, trustee Akaka.
Mahalo, um, I want to make two points here. So, uh, first and foremost, when we're talking about the process, I think going forward, maybe something that we can consider is, um, in the ask, when those are asking, uh, in their application, is to ask them if there are, um, I see that in the past, there's draft or pass flyer. Maybe we can ask for a pamphlet that was provided at registration that might give more detail. Um, whether that's available on your website or not, but maybe that's something that we can have on hand so that when, uh, these are presented to, uh, the board and to, um, those vetting in that process, that we have a clearer idea of what we're working with. And then two, is that if there is any footage, photography, um, any sharings that were, um, provided to you by attendees, um, that, that be shared with the Office of Hawaiian Affairs so that we can then, uh, reshare that, whether it be on our website or on our social media, and then others that might pick up on that, might want to reshare that as well. Um, the other, um, being is, I believe trustee Ohuna had mentioned it in the very beginning that, uh, why are we even voting on this? So the action item is looking at re-examining this. So another option is just to not vote on it as it might not be necessary to do so. If we are pleased with, with, after what we've learned and we, we are bettering the process together as a board with administration and mahalo to you both for joining us.
Yes, trustee Akaka, yes.
Process, maybe we leave it at that.
So the, the proper motion for today would be either to, to, um, rescind or amend, because it's already passed.
Right, so we don't need to do if, if we are satisfied with what the discussion has provided?
Then it stands.
No need.
Then it stands, yes.
I wanted to, um, amend the motion on the floor that we affirm the, um, the monies that we offered, but in the amount of $11,250 to consider, um, the, uh, scoring that Chair mentioned. And, um, rescind the original motion, is that what?
So, so it's a motion? It's a motion to amend to award 11,500 versus 15.
11,250 she did?
11,250. So your motion then would be a motion to amend the, the previous action to award 11,250.
Yes.
Correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Can I ask how we landed at that number?
We, we cannot just make up stuff.
Yeah, I, I, I think we're looking at a process that is fair and sound. And so, and again, based on what trustee Ohuna had said later, two is that if we're going to keep doing this, then it would be fair then to do this to all those that we have sponsored. And I, I don't think that we should be doing that. We need to make a decision and, and go forward with that.
Yeah, if we're going to amend, I want to amend all six of them, all, all the people who had grants given out on that day too. Sorry.
Thank you, Chair. Is my microphone on? Thank you, thank you, Chair, and thank you fellow trustees and our guests today. I will vote no on this motion. Because I strongly believe that we made a commitment after proper deliberation. Our administration came to us with an action item. We voted in committee, we voted as a full board, and we decided to award an amount. We gave our word. Plans were made on that basis. Projects were executed. Funds were spent by another organization, believing that OHA would be true to its word. So I think in principle, we should not go back on our word. Secondly, from what I have heard today, and, and I respect the differing opinions on how we might score and evaluate, I do respect that. But what, from what we have heard today in our administration's responses through Keal and KP, the administration, A, acted within its scope of authority. We have delegated to them this process, and they were carrying out the delegation that we gave them. And B, the decision they made was justifiable. We may have differing opinions on particular scoring items, but none of that rises to the level of any suspicion of fraud, waste, or abuse, or dereliction of duty by the administration. So the, I think it's important to note that we were witness today of our administration able to effectively explain its process. And I am confident in that process and proud of that process as well. Finally, I can't speak on behalf of the entire board, I'm just one member. But I would welcome my fellow trustees, any of them who should want to, to extend a couple of apologies. First, to Ryan and Kiola of Kuanake. We have, I apologize that you were brought here or came here today with our process open-ended like this, without having told you what our complaint was. And with putting you into a public process in which your records and other things, and this issue was distributed broadly, in a way, it wasn't for other applicants. And for any discomfort you may have experienced. I mean that sincerely. And again, and while I can't speak on behalf of all the board, I would like to apologize to our administration. I think you have done your job well. And I want to support the important lines of distinction between the board and the administration. Where we as board are fiduciaries responsible for setting policy and governing this organization. But we delegate to administration the management of the organization. And when we keep those lines clear, we function well. Thank you, Chair, for letting us have the discussion today. Thank you.
First of all, I'd like to concur with everything trustee Akina has said so far. But I also like to send a special, um, my special gratitude to Keal and your team. You guys have done amazing. I've witnessed over the past few weeks, the work you folks have put into this. And, um, and with all my heart, I believe in you folks, because you know you're doing this for the right reasons for our people. And I apologize for having this, in my opinion, to have this come to the, in front of the people, in front of our board. This should never have happened, it should have been internal, in my opinion. But I also want to let you know, Keal, how much I greatly appreciate you and your team. You have just done amazing work. I know this trustees, because I work with them almost every day. We, we speak every single week on all the topics that is brought before us. And Stacy, thank you for being a part of that. Um, please send everyone, uh, my profound gratitude for all the work you folks have done. And thank you, Ryan, uh, you guys for coming here, unfortunately, not, I do not want to see this in this manner. But, um, I'm going to go with no, that's going to be my vote today.
So feel like we have a high-level fiduciary responsibility. Even if a error was made, um, it's our responsibility to take ownership of that and make a correction if that's required. I don't have a problem with that, because until our resources are sent out from this organization, we have every opportunity to do that. I support trustee Lindsay's recommendation. I think, um, even a one-point scoring this, uh, change on the score sheet would have reduced this sponsorship to a 75% sponsorship. And fifteen, 75% of $15,000 is $11,250, and I don't think that's unreasonable. I think it's appropriate. It's, um, unfortunate that we've already taken a vote on the previous action. But I also think, um, reversing that decision, supporting the event with what is a very reasonable amount for the services performed, um, is also warranted as well. I think it's a good compromise. I think we learned a lot from this, and I'm sure there'll be, um, you know, a greater, um, review of our sponsorships as they come in front of our committees and our board in the future. And I want to reiterate the work that Keal, who's understaffed and overworked, does. I can sense that, I can hear your frustration. Um, at the end of the day, the nine of us have the highest level of fiduciary responsibilities for every single dollar that leaves OHA. And if it hasn't left yet, I don't think there, um, I don't think it's wrong of us to make a different decision. So I will be supporting the motion, no matter how the, um, whatever the outcome is.
Chair.
Trustee Lindsay.
I'd like, I'd like to withdraw my amendment and keep the motion as we, um, awarded this group the $15,000, because in, in all fairness to them, um, you know, they're not at fault. And, um, it's something that we have to correct internally. You are absolutely correct in your assumption that maybe it should have been less, but we did it already. So let's, um, dismiss them with God's blessings and, um, love from OHA that, um, they will assume the $15,000, and I'll look for a second.
Second. Trustee Galutaria.
Thank you very much. We have, we always like to turn these discussions into opportunities. You have an incredible opportunity to disseminate IKE. And that's where we come from. We want to disseminate IKE. So to whatever degree we can do that, whether it would be in the studios, I mean, you've got recording artists right here on this table, we understand what it takes. But however we can help you disseminate the IKE that you have, based on the, the talents that you folks put together and going forward as well, utilize the partnerships, okay? We appreciate that, okay? Thank you, Chair.
Alright, trustee Akaka.
Trustee, I'll, I'll go after trustee Ohuna, because I'm just asking for clarification from, uh, from, yeah, our board council, thank you.
Uh, yeah, just, it's just like me too, because it's already an okay, so I don't know why we're voting again. But I did want to say this, that, um, you know, Chair, I, I, I agree with you too, you know, we, we, we got to do a lot of work. And we, we still got to get behind this and make sure everything is, is done right. And, um, I, I think we should look in, more into it and, and, um, make sure that this process is, is done, like, it can get done, it can just go right through, um. I just don't know, I, I just don't want this kind of things to happen over and over and over again, so. For me, I already said yes, I'm not going to vote again, why are we voting if everybody's going to agree? Like, there is no such thing as a vote, they already had our, my yes, and I want to keep that yes, so. Thank you.
Yeah, so the, the vote would be either amend or rescind, because we've already approved it. So there's no vote to reaffirm. Yeah, so unless there's a, a motion that carries to amend or to rescind, then the action stands. The previous action.
Trustees, is there any motion to amend or rescind? Hearing none, then the motion stands, thank you, gentlemen. Okay, we're moving on to new business, this will be the status of OHA activities. Lehu, do we have anyone's, actually, you know what, um, want to go with beneficiary advocacy and empowerment first? Trustee Galutaria, think you're ready for that one? Okay, our next agenda item is 3B, Committee on Beneficiary Advocacy and Empowerment. Uh, due to the cancellation of our committee meetings, we will be seeking a few waivers for certain agenda items, one of them being the BAE item 3B2, 2025 Legislature. This should be OHA position on bills naming OHA Matrix 2. Uh, we're going to call upon Chair Galutaria of the BAE Committee to read the motion to request a waiver.
Mahalo, Chair, I'd like to request for approval to waive the following BAE committee matters to be directly considered by the Board of Trustees pursuant to the Office of Hawaiian Affairs Board of Trustees Bylaws, Article, uh, 9. Article?
Yep.
9, yeah.
Eight, eight.
Eight. Section M, the Committee on Beneficiary Advocacy, 2025 Legislature, OHA position on bills naming OHA Matrix 2 to adopt, amend the approval of staff's recommendations for positions reflecting on Matrix 2. Second.
Okay, we have a second, but trustee Wahai, do you have anyone signed up to speak on this item?
Yes, we have Jermaine Myers.
Okay, Jermaine.
Aloha, Chair.
Aloha.
Can you hear me? Aloha, um, aloha, Chair, Kahele, Vice Chair Souza, and honorable trustees. My name is Jermaine Myers. Mahalo for the opportunity to speak on Matrix 2, item number five, HCR 192. Please note that to date, the full board never took a position on HCR 192. HCR 192 proposes to establish a Native Hawaiian Economic Development Working Group for the following deliverables. Number one, identify economic development initiatives that directly benefit Native Hawaiians. And number two, study the definition of gaming and look at all options to spur economic opportunity. And three, OHA wants to be named as part of the working group. The House Committee on Tourism held a hearing on April 1st at 10:00 AM on HCR 192. OHA submitted written testimony in strong support. Please note, this was done without BAE committee approval and without Board of Trustees' approval. The Senate Committees on Economic Development and Tourism and Hawaiian Affairs held a joint hearing this Tuesday, two days ago, on April 15th at 1:10 PM. Again, OHA submitted written testimony in strong support. During the hearing, Senator Decoy called for Pony Askew to give oral testimony on behalf of OHA, as they had also signed up to give oral testimony. Pony Askew was not in attendance. Again, this written testimony in strong support was submitted to the Senate without BAE committee approval and without Board of Trustee approval. The question that comes to my mind are, one, does OHA have bylaws or policies that allow administration to submit written and/or oral testimony in support or opposition or with comments on behalf of OHA for legislative bills or resolutions without prior approval from the full Board of Trustees? Number two, does a BAE chair or BOT chair have authority to approve on their own for administration to submit written and/or oral testimony in support, opposition, or with comments on behalf of OHA for legislative bills or resolutions without prior approval from the full Board of Trustees? I recall OHA's pre-legislature briefing in January with the WAM committee in regards to OHA's budget and legislative package. In attendance was Kapohana Ferreira, Board Chair Kehale, Board Vice Chair Souza, and at-large trustee Keli'i Akina. During the briefing, Senator Donna Makata Kim informed OHA's Kapohana and trustees that before OHA's administration submits any testimonies to the legislature, Senator Kim asked that only, only testimony with full Board of Trustee approval is submitted. I'd like to know regarding HCR one nine two, what type of background did OHA solicit from the community as far as how they feel about gambling in Hawaii and how it affected their Ohana? If there was domestic violence because family lost their money in Las Vegas? Is there was domestic violence because someone is upset that they don't have money now after they lost it with gambling? Is there was friction in the family because of addiction to gambling? Hawaii has the highest rate of of living, cost of living. Has OHA understand that we call Las Vegas the ninth island because someone in poverty wants to try to get a quick way out of poverty? And therefore, that's why they have gambling? Because they want to get a quick paycheck? But thus, is that what OHA wants us to do? Now looking to be lucky? And trying to say that game of chance is the way that we should get money instead of hard work at an employment or at a business? Is that what we're doing now as Native Hawaiians? We're saying that it's better to go and look and see if you can be lucky on a roulette table, on a poker table, on a slot machine versus hard work? Is that what we're saying? Keha, Kua'apu, God bless all of you.
Do you have anyone else?
No one else.
I'll remind our trustees that we'll be asking for a waiver. And that will require two-thirds majority of the members for to affirm the action item for today. And so it's time we'll recognize Chair Galutera to read the motion. Read the waiver.
Yeah.
And Wahai, trustee Wahai is second, so we can vote on that one first, the waiver.
Trustees, any discussion on matrix two? Trustee Akaka.
Mahalo, I'm voting Ole as, as it was stated earlier by trustee Souza, that the whole purpose in us being able to go through a process, a multi-layered process is to have it go from the committee meetings to then be then further vetted and up for discussion for beneficiaries and for our board at the board meeting. So I believe that that is a good process for us to practice, and I do have concerns of my own regarding how we landed on the HCR one nine two decision with testimony as well.
I'll just have one comment on that. I completely agree. Unfortunately, issues with the United States Postal Service last week that were completely out of our control, our staff did exactly what they have always done. But issues with the postal service prevented the public noticing of the relevant standing committees, which is why we had to cancel that meeting last week. Fortunately, some of these items were on the board agenda, and that was agendized properly. And the, I guess the sense of urgency on this is that it's conference. And by the time we would come back into a standing committee at the end of the month, the legislature is on the verge of synodying and we would like some of that testimony to be provided. But Chair, did you have any comments on that?
I would concur that it's crunch time. And in the course of our business, yes, we do indeed. We're gonna concur with what it is that you're talking through. But now, at this particular point in the legislative process, either we're on deck or we're off deck. So it's more than an exception than the rule. That's my, that's my.
Trustee Lindsay?
Yes. First of all, I want to say that HCR died yesterday, so we have time to discuss it at a BAE meeting. But you know, Chair, I say again that during the legislative period, our BAE committee gotta meet every week.
Yes, that was what I wanted to say.
Because we, things are passing us by and we're not talking about it because we don't have meetings for two weeks. And that's only during the legislative session. We gotta be on board to discuss what's happening there. They're working fast. So unless they decide they're gonna go one year like us, you know, we need to be up on them. And that's why there is a definite need for our BAE committee to meet every week during the session. So I just wanted to say that.
Sure.
Mahalo, I have the same mana'o that I wanted to add on that is in terms of staying on top of it and for us to be current and not have to worry about whether it's a glitch in a mail postage system or manpower or what have you, that we have that weekly opportunity. Sometimes weekly is not always necessary for whatever reason, and then it can be canceled. But having a standing weekly meeting helps aid us in being able to be prepared so that we don't run into any issues in terms of upcoming deadlines, in terms of filing agendas and providing that information as best as we can online.
Thank you. And I'm sure that when this session is done, the Chair and our chief advocate, who's in the seat, this is her first legislative session, will hot wash the last four to five months. And that may be something that we consider doing next year. The reality is that we're in conference now, and we have to have testimony provided on these items regardless of what happened that was out of our control. And that is why we're we're doing this.
Yeah, Chair, and I will, I will say that, you know, I really appreciate Lainala and her work, especially when we're talking about items of importance and her baby's crying and has to be changed. So we really appreciate that. And we know we're definitely understaffed here. We're doing our best. And thank you to Kapohana too for taking the time to be at the Capitol as well. Yeah. Thank you, Chair.
Trustees, any other discussion? Okay, if not, we'll take a vote, and we will require two-thirds to move this action item and affirm it. So we can provide the testimony to the conference committees on the bills that are still alive that are in matrix two that affect the Office of Foreign Affairs.
Before we vote, I would be interested in knowing from administration what specific bills are of urgency so that we can best decide on if they should be waived or not.
Great question. Lainala?
I mean, it's really just SB nine oh three. That's what we wanted to talk about on matrix two.
The PLT bill?
PLT Working Group, nine oh three.
And that has.
That would be matrix one. Can you repeat that again, or can that be put on the screen so we can see what that is? So you said the budget bill on matrix one?
And while we're looking for that, I was just reminded that our vote would be on the waiver. If that is gets a two-thirds majority vote, then we would be then voting on matrix two. The board council suggests we take the vote on the waiver. Then we'll know whether we will dive into the content of the bills or not.
Before we do that, I just wanted to know what, again, I heard the budget bill, but what is the other bill?
So actually, the budget bill, we'd need to do the waiver for matrix one as well, HB four ten, the budget bill is on matrix one, and then SB nine oh three, this is on matrix two.
We've already only agendized matrix two. So yes, we have a motion on the waiver.
Okay, so we're not, we're not voting on matrix one, just matrix two, and that's on what item number?
Item B. And we're actually not even voting on that right now. We're just voting on the waiver.
Oh, yeah, but I was not inclined to go with the waiver. However, I might be open to going with the waiver should I know what is at stake here.
So I think is it Senate Bill nine oh three?
Yes, it's item two on matrix two.
Three B two. Wait, wait, I'm sorry. We have matrix one, two, three, and four.
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. We have four matrices. So yes, there's the budget bill, there's nine oh three. What's in three and four?
I think it would just, we just need to talk about HB four ten on matrix one and SB nine oh three on matrix two.
Okay.
So SB nine oh three is regarding the PLT Working Group.
You need to amend this motion?
Oh, okay. Yeah, this is just the waiver that gets us to the next part about talking about the matrices. Okay, Rocka vote.
Trustee Ahuna?
Yes.
Trustee Akaka?
I, however, going forward, I think we need to have a weekly BAE meeting. Or so I don't want to have to keep waiving these committee meetings.
Noted.
Trustee Akina?
Aye.
Trustee Alapa?
Yes.
Trustee Galutera?
Aye.
Trustee Lindsay? Trustee Souza?
Aye.
Trustee Wahai?
Yes.
Chair Kehale?
Aye.
You have nine yes votes.
Trustee Galutera? I guess we'll start with matrix one.
We'll start with, okay, we don't need a vote on matrix one, do we?
It's just an update.
Thank you, Chair. So what we'd like to discuss, not discuss, but bring forward is that the House sent our budget bill unamended, supported all of our asks. The Senate is wanting to give a status quo, which is the three million. So it is gonna go to conference in that state. I will be putting forward correspondence to the conference committees, basically reaffirming that OHA is in support of the HD position and not the Senate position going into conference.
Okay. So just to clarify, we have four matrices. The process to affirm those matrices, are we doing them all in one pass or individually?
The motion was to waive the BAE process, right? So we put on the matrix, because that passed.
One by one. Okay, one by one. Start with one. Okay. Correct.
Okay, Chair, I'd like to move for the adoption or amendment of the approval of staff's recommendations for position on bills naming OHA as reflected in matrix two.
Second, second by trustee Wahai. Discussion, trustee Akaka.
Although HCR, given that we're on matrix two, although HCR one nine two has, is no longer continuing, I would like to bifurcate that because I don't believe, well, I don't support the support position. And I'm not let's just say I was surprised to learn of the strong support testimony provided by the Office of Hawaiian Affairs, and I would like to know how we even how we got there and how we ended up in that position because I was, as the vice chair of BAE, I personally was thrown off. And, and if a legislator, whomever constituent, a beneficiary is reaching out to me, and I don't know how to answer that, and I'm the vice chair of that committee, that's, that's an uncomfortable situation to be in. And on top of that, when, as these hearings have been going and the testifiers have been testifying, there are strong concerns that have been shared from community members, from the prosecutor's office, Steve Alm, and members of our Hawaiian community. And I have to agree with a lot of what they're saying. And if if the Senate committee, the Chair of that committee is even sharing what, that she has her own reservations and that she feels she needs more data and she has her strong concerns, I think that needs to be something to take into consideration. So again, I'm not I want to know how we even came to put strong support in there. What was the process on that?
I'm sure so.
Okay, just for the public, can you name the resolution just so everyone?
So this is HCR one nine two?
Thank you.
So I'll take responsibility for what happened, but the way it came to OHA was a member of the SNI team was contacted directly by a representative shortly before the first hearing and was told this is a bill to, or this is a resolution to form a working group to look at pathways for Native Hawaiian economic development in the Office of Hawaiian Affairs is not named. You guys need to request that you be added to this working group because we know that economic development is a a ma'ana'i mali'ola priority for the Office of Hawaiian Affairs. That was what was communicated to me. It was a resolution, not a bill. So I agreed that, you know, if there, if if there was testimony that we wanted to be added to the working group, that that should be non-controversial. I will apologize with every single bill that we've submitted testimony. I've looked at personally since this was a resolution. And it was communicated that it was just about an economic development working group. I did not look at it myself. I just said, okay, fine, if it's just to name OHA to a working group, there's no harm in making that request. And it wasn't until you know, inquiries that I realized or I found out that this, again, it was a working group, so it would look at gaming as one pathway to economic development. I didn't realize myself. I don't know if the staff members that were contacted were aware that it was seen as a gaming, a pro-gaming bill. But I apologize that it fell through the approval process. It seemed as requested that we be added to a working group, that it did not seem like it would be something that we would want to be left out of.
Okay, so in our strong support testimony dated April fifteenth, it does recognize gaming in there. So I.
Yeah, I did not draft the testimony and I did review it afterwards and I read it as recognizing that, you know, gaming is controversial. If I personally had more eyes on it, I might not have phrased it like that. And again, it is a matter, like you said, of timing of it not going before the board. I think the basic gist was we wanted to be included if such a working group were to go forward regardless of what, you know, even if gaming, maybe we, I agree, we should have stated if the board had a position on gaming it more strongly in the testimony, but I do think that we would want to have a seat at the table, which was the goal of of the testimony. But I agree, the process that it went through was irregular and it shouldn't have gone.
Thank you, Lainala.
So what did happen? So somebody drafted it in the public?
No, 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 no. Yeah, yeah, it came up.
Who gave the go-ahead to say strong support?
I said it was fine to say support for us joining the working group.
Includes gambling?
No, I did not realize it included gambling.
That's a huge part of this, though.
Chair Galutera?
Again, we're talking process as opposed to substance here. OHA needs to be at the table, period, for this type of resolution. So it won't happen again, right, Lainala? Would happen again. But going forward, I would, I would say that things are moving so quickly. And from from what I'm gathering in some of my limited conversations with the existing legislators is that there is an appetite for gaming this year. Now, correct me if I'm wrong, you know, Huli, you've been down there. What's your thoughts, Kapohana? Is there, is there an appetite for gaming? On the lowest, what is it? It's not casino gaming.
So from what I understand, it's sports betting?
Sports betting.
Sports betting. But I think this brings up a good point, and I know we don't want to go down the rabbit hole of process. I do want to say that I think on the administration side, it would be very helpful. We can do this in postmortem, but to have agreement by the board on what stances we're gonna take on controversial issues. But to have agreement by the board on what stances we're going to take on controversial issues that would, those kind of guardrails would be extremely helpful.
We can do that going forward in committee.
Uh, trustee Huna?
Yep, trustee Huna. Thank you, Vice Chair. Oh, 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 okay. Thank you, Chair. Um, no, um totally agree. I just wanted to make sure that we have this conversation um with sports gaming. Uh, one of the reasons why is because I just want to know our rights as a native Hawaiian organization. What kind of rights do we have? Um, do they need us in order to have this this uh gaming happen? I I, you know, those are some of the questions I'd like to know. And the reason why I like to know is because I always said, if you're going to build a casino, let's bring back the super ferry. Because I don't want them on our la- islands. Okay, thank you.
Trustees, any more discussion?
Uh, uh, yes, so um I would like to bifurcate HCR one nine two because it currently states support in there and I don't sup-
I I think uh there's a verify me. I think, oh, sorry, no, no.
So I would like to uh bifurcate that part of of matrix two to bifurcate HCR one nine two.
Okay, along. Trustee Souza?
Uh, I want to share. Um, to trustee Akaka's a question or request. I don't think there needs to be a bifurcation. Um, there's an opportunity for us to vote yes or no on the current motion. This is what I believe. Maybe we can ask counsel, what do you?
Well, I I would like to move to bif- bifurcate HCR one nine two. So that would be voted separately from the rest of the, what's listed in matrix two.
Bill is dead, so the vote won't have any effect.
The Senate bill is dead, however, it's still, yeah, for the record, it is. I don't want to support that.
Okay, we have a second. Members' discussion?
I just want to say that a bifurcation is in all due respect to the trustee that is asking for it. Just take it out. It doesn't hurt anybody. So I, in case you're not familiar with bifurcation, it's all good.
Any more discussion? Is that required two thirds of vote? Nope, okay.
Justia Huna?
Aye.
Justia Kaka?
Aye.
Justia Kina?
Aye.
Justia Lapa?
Yes.
Justia Galutaria?
No.
Justia Lindsay? Justia Souza?
Aule.
Justia Waehe?
Yes.
Chirka Hale?
No.
We have three no and six yes.
Okay, moving on to the underlying motion. Yep, do we have any additional discussion on the underlining now bifurcated matrix two?
Could I make a comment on um matrix two that includes SB nine oh three? Um, I apologize, it's an, it's written, it says comment, but we voted last week to oppose to give admin the maximum flexibility if we need to kill the bill. So it should actually say oppose. That was what we voted on last week and we are in that um we are in that dance of trying to move the bill in an amended version so that we don't have to kill it. But um the board did last week grant us the authority to oppose it if it's not amended to take out the settlement language, which we talked about and which we're working on right now.
Thank you for that clarification. Trustees, any more discussion on matrix two? Hearing none? This requires simple majority. Okay. To adopt matrix two?
Justia Huna?
All in, aye.
Justia Kaka?
Aye.
Justia Kina?
Aye.
Justia Lapa? Justia Galutaria? Justia Lindsay?
Aye.
Justia Souza? Justia Waehe?
Yes.
Chirka Hale?
Aye.
We have nine yes votes.
Okay, we're moving to matrix five now, correct?
So we have to do the bifurcated item HCR one nine two to vote on that one. The bifurcated HCR one nine two. We voted on the matrix two minus the HCR one nine two. Yeah, so we voted on. Yeah.
So you have everything passed.
Yeah, minus HCR one nine two. So now we'd be voting on HCR one nine two as that was voted to bifurcate, yeah.
One more vote? Is there a second on the motion?
It was already uh, it was already.
Okay.
Yeah, on the original motion.
Wait, uh, my understanding is that we, that vote we just did, just the last one, was regarding matrix two, but then the next vote would be without HCR one nine two. So then the next vote we would be doing following that would be the bifurcated item, which is HCR one nine two. Because so we've.
So what are we voting on?
Right now, we would be voted, right now, we would be voting on HCR one nine two as that was bifurcated from matrix two.
What are we?
Yeah.
And that, are you making up, this part of your bifurcated motion, the motion to change OHA's position?
Yes.
Did you, did you, I must have missed that. Did you state that?
It's currently listed as support and the testimony provided by the Office of Hawaiian Affairs was to strongly support. However, I don't, I, yeah, I, it did not come before the board and I, I don't support the.
What would you like?
I would.
Mr. Chair, let me clarify, did this not ever come before the board?
No.
At all, ever? Was never on any matrix?
Yeah, hold on. To trustee um Waehe, so when this concurrent resolution was introduced, it mentioned nothing about native Hawaiians, right? It was since amended multiple times to include in the title a Native Hawaiian Economic Development Working Group. That then triggered OHA's attention and subsequent involvement. So that's why it didn't come before us, because we had no plan it before.
Sen- Senator Decoit from Maluka'i, that she took the Native Hawaiian out. She took it out because, because of our opposition to.
It it's not a new one, but wa- was there a vehicle that they uh got it or replaced? I mean, what was the original bill? Rizzo, okay, got it.
Is it still HCR one nine two, uh, uh?
I I pulled up HCR one nine two. It's the House Draft two. Is that what we're looking at?
Yeah, it was concurrent resolution.
I think it died and then maybe it was brought back.
Well, what what's interesting?
It's dead.
Native Hawaiians, so that we cannot.
It was interesting is that um it uh went in front of two committees in the Senate, both of which says pass amendments, but the current posted version is not a Senate draft. One or two, it's a House draft two.
Yeah, HD two, I believe.
Yeah, it I know it's it, but it would have passed into the Senate as a House Draft two, and then when it went to the first Senate committee, this looks like a joint committee on April fifteenth, E D T and Hawaiian Affairs, it was passed with amendments, which then it should have been a HCR one nine two Senate draft one. Um, also on the same day, it was, recommendation was not adopted. So I'm not exactly sure what's I I don't think what we're looking at here is the current amended Senate version of the bill, but even though it passed with amendments, the recommendation was not adopted. So one of the committees must not have uh affirmed the vote.
Yeah.
At the end of the day, this this resolution is dead. So if we want to change the previously submitted position on OHA, that's what trustee Akaka is recommending. Do you have a position you're wanting the board to consider?
Yes, so um similar to what was mentioned earlier in terms of uh guardrails and so forth with another uh bill is that perhaps something more along the lines of comment that yes, we would appreciate to have the Office of Hawaiian Affairs or Native Hawaiian people considered when they're looking at a um economic well-being for um for our people. However, in the current form that it was in specifically mentioning sports gambling, that part is of concern and that I don't feel that we should be saying strongly support.
Trustee Souza? Sorry, somebody's microphone. Um, can, from what I heard earlier, this bill was dead. Is that correct? So if we change our comm- uh, our stance from approve to or support to comment, what are we commenting on? Can somebody ask me, uh, answer me that question? What are we going to be commenting on?
I I think the the contention is on the, any type of gambling. Um, however, there is no position by this board currently
Yeah.
on that subject.
How how was that a good use of my time right now? Can anybody answer that question? Thank you.
Uh, I just want to just make note uh.
We could say that about the previous discussion.
I just want to make note that um in the HCR House Draft two that we provided strong support on, it calls to do one of two things. So identify economic development initiatives that directly benefit native Hawaiians. I'm in strong support of that. And study the definition of gaming and look at all options to spur economic opportunity. So study the definition of gaming. I'm I'm in support of that. Study the definition. I don't, I don't know really actually what that means, but and then spur economic opportunity. So those are the two things that, at least on record, OHA offered strong support on. Trustee Galutera?
Thank you, Chair. Uh, yeah, so going forward, is there any legislation that is floating right now that is even close to what is dead? No? Okay, I see.
So I guess, again, trustee um Akaka, if we're going to vote on your bifurcated motion, if you want the board to change this previous testimony to comments, you can make that and then we can vote on that. So we can move on.
Unless there's another recommended way about it by public policy.
Yeah, I mean, I think I would just go with um what Chirka Hale just defined as the purpose of this bill, which was to look at native Hawaiian economic development and look at the definition of gaming. And I would say maybe we would still support that as far as OHA being involved because would we want the state to look at the definition of gaming without us at the table? But um again, I'm ha- that's just what I would, I would say about that.
Okay, so when uh Chair Decoit was speaking on her own concerns and that she would want to know the data to make her own informed decision, um Steve Alm had responded by saying, as long as the working group is open to that kind of data, because the current way in which the resolution is written, he's worried that how that would open up casinos, lotteries, and um as opposed to this being a good idea or bad.
I would have a comment. The studying the definition of gaming would be reexamining Hawaii's existing policy in the legal code of how it defines gaming. That could be gambling, lottery, sports betting, casino operation. So this working group of which OHA would want to be at the table for uh reexamines how this state defines gaming in its legal code. So I would think that to the Chair's point, we would want to be at the table in those conversations versus not at the table. Because to Jermaine's point and others that are um may not support gaming because of its potential ill effects on our beneficiaries, the study of how we define gaming is super important. And we would want to be part of that conversation. So I think the position of OHA, though the board did not formally take that position, I think it's the right position.
Yeah, I'm okay with that then.
You're okay with?
So I would be voting no if it's um based on the position of support. Um, I feel that I I don't agree with this testimony per se based on uh the evidence provided uh by uh Steve Alm and by other members of the community that have their strong concerns, which I it's hard to disagree with a lot of the data that has been shared from overseas and um I I I don't feel comfortable with how our testimony was provided as it was written.
Okay. Affirm the position. Right now, it's in strong support and um we would vote to affirm that position. Did you have?
I just want to make clear for the record, unless Steve uh uh asserted his uh confirmation as to where, whether he supported or not. I think Steve was questioning uh and voicing his potential concerns, but I don't think he, Steve Alm uh took a stand on it, on this issue.
He took strong opposition in it, yeah. There's testimony, yes.
Okay. Well, just wanted to make sure OHA was in just
Sure.
using his name and, thank you.
Sure.
Yeah, sure.
Uh, just for clarity, we're voting on something that's not a life.
Yes.
But it's for the record.
It's for the record, okay.
Though it would not retract the record in committee. You're right, we, that.
It wasn't brought up in committee though because it was waived.
No, our submitted testimony to the legislature stands like.
That is correct.
Recant that. So that stands. However, this board will be taking a position that when out in the community with beneficiaries at community meetings and when specifically asked about this, then um you can voice um your position and how the board ultimately voted.
Yes, um, what, I also want to make note to that um what was stated uh previously by um Alm is the concern for our youth and creating a new generation of gamblers and that oftentimes that can result in bankruptcy and where you have what is described as a casino in your hand and a lot of people within our indigenous communities in Hawaii and continental side and so forth. Addiction is very prevalent in many forms, including gambling. And there was a Native American person that did testify as well uh speaking on his own experience and his community's experience on the strong concern and why he doesn't support this as they have experienced impoverished situations because of this. And so the concern is that we don't want our native Hawaiian people to be subjected to this without the proper data and so forth to make this decision.
And trustee Akaka, that is absolutely why we would want to be on this board and you could be yourself on that board as a representative of OHA voicing those concerns. That's why I'm in strong support.
Justia Huna?
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry about that, trustee Akina. My bad.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd appreciate being able to make a comment.
Absolutely.
Thank you. I I will urge my fellow trustees to vote no to the motion before us. First, because. First, because I don't think it's good for us to affirm that administration take a strong support position publicly on an issue that we have not discussed, which is also controversial. I do support the administration carrying out the function of lobbying and operating within the guidelines we've given and at times spontaneously and without the ability of the board to act, um, representing us. That, I don't dispute that. But thi- this issue in particular is so controversial in the Hawaiian community, of, of which we are representatives. We should make sure that our administration does not present a position for the organization unless the board has actually affirmed that position. So that's why I'll vote no. Secondly, upon reading the text of HCR one ninety-two HD two, I note that it is not about whether Oha is on the committee or the commission. It, it is a native Hawaiian commission or at least it has the purpose of serving the native Hawaiian community. So if we are voting on a position on this, it's not to say we want Oha to be included. What this resolution is about is that the, the commission will be established. And it's leaning toward gambling is very clear. It mentions that it exists for economic development of native Hawaiians, but the only form of economic development it spells out is gambling or gaming, gaming. So I, I, I just want to make it clear that we're not voting on whether to include Oha. I would personally want to make sure Oha gets on board any structure that addresses native Hawaiians. And I don't, I don't see that the resolution excludes Oha in that. Thank you.
Thanks, trustee Akina. I just have two comments on that. One, it's not a commission, it's a working group. The second, I don't um, I don't see where it's explicitly naming gaming as the purpose of this resolution. The word gaming is, to my knowledge, listed and stated just once in this resolution. So I don't. If you can clarify what you previously just said, I don't uh, I don't see that.
I'll be glad to, I just need a moment with, oh, my glasses unfortunately. From what I can see, the only word gaming is, it's stated once in the be it further resolved? Yes, in fact, that's what I'm referring to, which is on line, on page two, li- line number two, preceding that it says, be it further resolved that the working group is requested to, one, identify economic development initiatives that directly benefit the native Hawaiians. So that's the category. Economic development initiatives that directly benefit native Hawaiians. And two, study the definition of gaming and look at all options to spur economic opportunity. Of all those options, the only one specified is gaming. And I think we've been around politics long enough to know that this can easily be a vehicle for the item that is being specified. It doesn't mention here other options such as job development, other options such as vocational training, um, et cetera. It only specifies one. Now, what I said is of course interpretive, I, I accept that. But I'm just giving you my political inclination on this, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chair.
Trustee Wahee?
I do want to say that um, leave you guys with this. Every gam- every gambler knows that the secret to surviving is knowing what to throw away and knowing what to keep.
Pejua, please. Roll call vote.
Trustee Ahuna?
Aye.
Trustee Akaka?
A'ole to the current position of support.
Trustee Akina?
A'ole.
Trustee Alapa? Trustee Galutaria? Trustee Lindsay? Trustee Souza?
Aye.
Trustee Wahee?
Yes.
Cher Kaheli?
Aye.
And trustee Galutaria?
Aye.
We have five yes and four no.
Okay, moving on to the second motion, this would be matrix five. Chair would recognize Chair Galutaria.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to, uh.
Trustee Akina?
Sorry, Mr. Chair, I, I'd appreciate it if you would read the, the vote tally again and uh, clarify whether trust the Rickwood voted yes, no, or kanalua.
Sure.
Yes, um, trustee Galutaria kanalua the first round and then he voted yes the second time when I asked him.
Oh, thank you.
So that was a total of five yes votes and four no votes.
Thank you, thank you for the clarification.
No problem. Okay, Chair.
Is this for matrix five?
Number five.
Okay, uh, Chair, I'd move to adopt and amend the approval of staff's recommendations uh, for positions on bills affecting native Hawaiian housing uh, as reflected in matrix five, second.
Second by Chair uh, trustee Wahee. Members' discussion on matrix five. I'm sorry, any testifiers on matrix five?
There's no one.
Okay, no testifiers. Trustees' discussion? Hearing none?
Trustee Ahuna?
Aye.
Trustee Akaka?
Aye.
Trustee Akina?
Aye.
Trustee Alapa? Trustee Galutaria? Trustee Lindsay? Trustee Souza? Trustee Wahee? And Cher Kaheli?
Aye.
We have nine yes votes.
Okay, does that complete the work on BA? Okay, great. Trustees, we're going to take a very quick no, very quick, quick break and go to the lua. We have a special guest who are going to join us from Hilo for our next agenda item. I want to give them a chance to log in, is that okay? Okay, quick recess.
Four fifty, one oh five? One oh five, seven minutes.
What time, you guys, I can't hear, but anyway.
Sorry, sorry trustee Ahuna, one oh five.
Oh.
We can meet in seven minutes.
I, I, my god, I can't hear anything.
The budget and finance agenda, mahal.
I should, I'll log on at one oh five.
Tony, the amount of time that we.
Yeah. There's also an opportunity for the B and F, also budget and B committee to reach out. I had a five. So. Yeah, but it's on the end line. So for me, there's an opportunity for the, for the branch party to come to the board table. I don't know who got your items, right? We serve everyone's time, but I don't think it's justified, right? And so for me, when he comes to this table, I'm going to be sure to really know and answer his point and be able to support why that stands.
I'm quite sure.
Not, not leaving, I'll say that we all have opportunities to reach hours or request a meeting. Okay, I, I don't know, because honestly, that's all, I'm not going to leave you anybody else because we all have opportunities to go home and pray. Boy, it's a waste of time because we all have an opportunity to vote yes or no. The bill is dead, there's no point in bifurcating. And we get it, you're stating the point, you don't, you don't want us to support it. We're all on record, I need those enough justification. So at that point, it's like, hey, let's take a vote because we have a cool agenda. Move on to that, and that's my, I saw it that way. Let's do your technical discussion, just in general. We did take a lot of time on that first one too. We did, I. Oh, it was a, it was a question, how was that a good use of my time? Yeah. Somebody could have asked that too, how was that a good use of their time? Yeah. I was trying to ask the, I was trying to ask the questions earlier. Um. It was supported, or that was the recommendation, then we found out the bill is dead, so there's no point at that point, right? We've got new information. Oh, I think we asked three questions, I think they're like, those are very good discussions. That, that's what I asked, I would have given a word table, right? That, that was my concern. It wasn't what they did, what the numbers were, how they get here. Because there's actual layers, there is actual.
Yeah, I know. But the word.